Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 20 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Hayner?
Here.
Councilmember Dish?
Present in Chicago, Illinois.
Councilmember Griswold?
President, Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Song?
Rosen.
Councilmember Song? Mayor, I think we lost Councilmember Song.
I believe we did. My suspicion is she'll try to come on back.
Councilmember Grand?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Adina?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Mayor Taylor?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Ayer?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here in Ann Arbor.
Councilmember O'Malley?
President, Ann Arbor.
Councilmember Song?
Honolulu. Here in Honolulu.
Thank you. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Move by. Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion of the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? The agenda is approved. We have communications today from our indefatigable city administrator.
No, sir, nothing additional.
We have no introductions today, and so we have public commentary reserve time. Public commentary reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and committee about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, you need to have signed up in advance by contacting your city clerk. To speak at public comment reserve time, please enter the number on your screen. That is 877-853-5247. Once you're connected, please enter a meeting ID 942-1273-2148. Once you're connected further, please enter *9. *9 to indicate that you are speaking or it's your turn to speak. Our clerk will identify you by the last three digits of your telephone number when it is your turn to speak. When it's your turn to speak, you'll have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Mojang Sababiasafani.
Caller with the phone number ending in 941. Press *6. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ann Arbor City Council would like to call itself progressive. Why do you call yourself progressive? Just like the Woodrow Wilson progressive, Ann Arbor City Council is a racist killer. Racist to the bone against the Palestinian people. You call yourselves progressive? Why? For putting psychedelic drugs in easy reach of every Ann Arborite? Without any medical supervision or prescription required? That's your progressivism? Why you call yourself progressive? For legitimizing public marijuana lounges? Again, with no prescription required? Why? For launching an alcohol-friendly social district? What a scam. That is your pandemic plan. Instead of healthcare for everyone, you dope them up so you can fill up city council with your mafia. You fill the streets with luxury housing while doing nothing to build public housing. You fill the streets with bike paths, but you do nothing to build the public transportation we need. So the same herd of cars can crash into more bikes and the city stays addicted to, you guessed it, cars. You shoot off your mouth about guillotine dioxin plume without ever putting city shovels in the ground to clean it up. You never campaigned for $15 minimum wage. Never campaigned for $15 minimum wage. You'd never push for expanding union membership because that would empower the voters to throw your ass out and get a government that defends basic human rights for everyone. Woodrow Wilson was so much like you that brings us these segregated federal workers. He loved that Ku Klux Klan movie called Birth of a Nation. He said you murder Haitians, Dominicans, and Nicaraguans. You are so much like Wilson. Look at your murderous opposition to any Palestinian human rights. For the past 20 years. You call that progressive? How many years have you blocked the resolution opposing US military aid to apartheid state of Israel? How many years? So Israel continues massacring Palestinians and Palestinian blood is on your hands. You keep passing Israel the political ammunition to keep shooting. And more voters recognize that full scope of your inhumane racism now than before. They will vote you out. I promise you that. They will vote you out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
Mr. Coleman? Go ahead.
This is Blaine Coleman. I have to ask you about your ongoing addiction to killing Palestinians. This is the one unchangeable fact of not just American political life, but even way down at the Ann Arbor City Council level. It's the unchanging fact of Ann Arbor City Council politics. From hell or high water, you keep killing Palestinians. You keep throwing all your weight hard against even the smallest Palestinian human rights resolution. And I've been a witness to it for the last 20 years that this city council and mayor, both mayors, have really done everything possible to throw their weight against every and any Palestinian human rights resolution that's ever been proposed. Here, you've been blocking real hard, blocking the resolution against military aid to Israel. Why? Why? As I said, you have to get rid of your addiction to killing Palestinians. It's not a permanent act of political life. A lot of things used to be permanent acts of political life that are no more. I really don't understand you. Even when the National Democratic DSA, Democratic Socialists of America, even when the National DSA speaks up for boycott, divestment, and sanctions against Israel, even then, the local DSA people are nowhere to be found on this issue in city council or in any public venue. Why is that? Even the DSA people running for city council themselves are against any kind of resolution against military aid to Israel. I don't understand this strong, strong drive you have to killing the Palestinian people. I just don't understand it.
30 seconds.
So I have to oppose. I have to oppose this addiction you have to killing Palestinians. I have to speak at city council meetings until you either open your ears or you get thrown out by the voters. I have to assume that the voters of Ann Arbor have an aversion to racist city council members. I have to assume there is a political cost to your constant killing of Palestinians, to your constant throwing your weight against.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Adina?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to draw attention of my colleagues to the actions of our Energy Commission last week. Councilmember Briggs and I are liaisons to that body. And as you know, they have been investigating and debating for several months possibilities about exploring a feasibility study for a potential municipal utility. And so last week, they did pass a resolution recommending that city council authorize a feasibility study for a municipal utility. And that resolution also called for us to initiate work towards creation of a municipal sustainable energy utility, which Dr. Stoltz has previously shared with us. So Councilmember Briggs and I are going to continue working with staff to bring something to this body, likely early January. And so I just wanted to draw your attention to that because I don't believe the minutes we yet shared on this agenda. But you can find the resolution on Legistar, and I am confident that the minutes will come to you soon. Thanks.
Councilmember Dish?
Thank you very much. I have some good news to report that I learned today from a staff member in the solid waste area. And that is that Ann Arbor was awarded $850,000 from the State of Mission to upgrade the drop-off station. That is huge, and I'm so excited and so grateful for the staff who must have worked hard on that application. In February, from the 6th to the 12th, the city will be partnering with Live Zero Waste, which is a nonprofit founded by two Ann Arborites, for a zero-waste challenge. And the challenge is to produce no trash or recycling for those seven days. Now, nobody's going to get mad at you if you mess up. But the great thing is that each day you'll get great tips about how to shop, feed yourself, clothe yourself, and even party in a zero-waste way. So it's going to be fun, and you can register for that at the Live Zero Waste website. That's liveszerowaste.org, or you can just Google Ann Arbor Zero Waste Challenge. And finally, in the spirit of Councilmember Adina's previous remarks, I want to call everyone's attention to a resolution that the Environmental Commission passed on December 2nd, which has not yet, those minutes haven't yet been uploaded, but they did pass a resolution asking us to restore funding to the Deer Call. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Griswold?
Since this is the last meeting of the year, I just want to thank staff for going above and beyond in this very, very difficult year. I also want to commend SIO Township for taking it up on themselves. Not waiting for the EPA, not waiting for EAGLE, but actually doing dioxin testing in residential wells. MLive has an excellent article on that, and I'm sure there'll be more information from the Environmental Commission in the future on that. The third thing is, I want to focus on brutal honesty. I think the only way that we are going to get to the root causes of some of our operational issues is if we are honest about the causes of those issues. And one of the reasons is that city council seems to go from one initiative to a millage, to an initiative, and we don't give staff time to evaluate, nor do we have any expectation of evaluating or implementing metrics. And we will not be able to improve if we don't do this. We cannot just rely on the legal department to scapegoat individuals in the name of improving our organization. Let's be honest, let's move forward to long-term sustainable improvement. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. All of council was alerted to this, and MLive wrote a story about it. But I do want to make a comment about the landlords who have withdrawn their lawsuit regarding both the early leasing ordinance and the fair chance ordinance. This is really good news. And I'm already talking to people about how we can get to work in addressing some of the loopholes and some of the challenges that we have seen this fall in implementation of the early leasing ordinance. There are still a lot of problems left to be fixed. And so I just want to acknowledge that because we have been hearing from people who have alerted us to the many problems that just really haven't been yet solved.
Further communication from council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Song has indicated, sorry, Councilmember Song has indicated she's trying to raise her hand but having trouble.
Okay, Councilmember Song, thank you.
I just want to note that there was a water main break in Ward 2 last night, and I wanted to thank staff for working so hard in remedying that and getting communications out, I think, to the city website and onto nextdoor.com and how there isn't a boil water alert and that I think everyone has water again and access to good water pressure. So thank you for the timely response.
Further communication from council? Councilmember Song, if during the course of this meeting you're unable to raise your hand, just wave, and we'll rely upon someone to help me if I don't see you. I would like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to city council at the December 6 regular session: to the Board of Review, Kathryn White, Ryan Dibble; to the Board of Review 2, Alice Owings; to the Recreation Advisory Board, Patty Smith, Nicholas Crowe, and Kurt Zvobda. May I have a motion, please? Move by. Councilmember Adina, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. I'd like to recommend the following nominations for your consideration: to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Alexa Nerdum; to the Historic District Commission, Beverly Willis; to the Transportation Commission, Megan Brovan and Suzette Wanikoff; to the Economic Development Corporation, Councilmember Ayer. May I have a motion, please, to consent agenda? Move by. Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Griswold?
No comment.
Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda? Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and committee about matters of municipal interest. To speak, pardon me, about a specific subject matter. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda, the specific subject of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is, the specific item on the agenda. To speak at a public meeting, a public hearing, please enter the number on your screen. That is 877-853-5247. Once you're connected, please enter meeting ID 942-1273-2148. Once you're connected further and we are in this public hearing at which you wish to speak, please enter *9. *9 to indicate that you wish to speak during that particular public hearing. Our clerk will identify you when it is your turn to speak by the last three digits of your telephone number. When it is your turn to speak, you will have three minutes in which to speak. So please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, zoning of 32.6 acres from R3 Town House Dwelling to R4B, multifamily dwelling Mill Creek Town Homes rezoning, 3002 Chelsea Circle. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Caller with the phone number ending in 228. Press *6 to unmute your phone. Phone number 228. Press *6 to unmute your phone. Caller with the phone number ending in 228. Do you have a comment? Caller with the phone number ending in 963. Do you have a comment? Press *6 to unmute your phone. Caller with the phone number ending in 963. Do you have a comment?
Yes, this is Jim Galloway. Hello?
Yes, you are audible, sir.
Yes, this is Jim Galloway. I'm calling on behalf of Dominex.
I'm sorry, sir, if you stand the line, please, that is a separate public hearing. Public hearing number three. We will get to you in just a little bit.
Okay, hang on.
Yep, thank you. My apologies.
Caller with the phone number ending in 228. Do you have a comment? Caller with the phone number ending in 228. Do you have a comment for this hearing? Press *6 to unmute your phone. Caller 228, do you have a comment?
Hello?
Yes, hello?
How do I watch this on the cable access? There's nothing there.
Ma'am, you are online and audible at a meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council in connection with a public hearing on Chelsea Circle, the Mill Creek Town Homes. Is that where you, do you wish to speak?
Hi, I'm trying to make a comment about the water, the stupid meter thing. But I thought that was at the end of the meeting. I'm trying to watch the meeting, and it's not on cable access and it's not online, so I don't know how to watch the meeting.
The, is it possible for a staff member to give the caller?
My husband said it was a Zoom meeting.
It's on Zoom, ma'am.
But I need to have some kind of code or something. I went to the meeting thing, but then I wanted some other code. My husband said it was a link. He said he sent me this link to the Zoom, but it's not a Zoom link.
The meeting is on cable TV channel 16. The meeting is live on cable channel 16.
I know, I'm on channel 99. That's what it said to do. And it said it was the city council meeting, but there was nothing there. It was just blank, and now it's something else.
Well, ma'am, I, we are.
On channel 16, we have channel, it says channel 20 from Detroit.
Well, ma'am, I don't know what to tell you with respect to your viewing. It is on channel 16. It is available online. You have called.
Are you talking about Comcast? It said to go to channel 99, and I did.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to move you along here. You have called in in a public hearing which relates to Mill Creek Town Homes.
I just don't know how to watch this thing because I'm pressing.
All right, well, ma'am, I'm going to have to.
I don't think about channel 16 because it's not on channel 16 because I have U-verse.
Ma'am, I don't know what to tell you. This is not, regrettably, I'm unable to provide adequate tech support to you. If, Ms. Bodri, do we have access? Councilmember Briggs, you seem to have a good idea.
The caller just hung up. The caller just hung up, but if she'll email cityclerk@a2gov.org, we'll try to help her out.
All right, so in the event.
Cityclerk@a2gov.org.
Is it possible that it is literally not being broadcast on channel 16?
No, it's not. She has U-verse, as I do, and it is not on 99 on U-verse. I cannot remember where we have found it on U-verse, but it is not on 99. It's Comcast 16.
That's what I'm asking. Is it possible that it's not actually being broadcast on Comcast?
She doesn't have Comcast. She doesn't have Comcast. She has the other service.
Okay. Other people are alerting me to the fact that it's not on Comcast either.
My images here on the screen have been incomplete all meeting. I don't know if it has anything to do with the troubles people are having, but I'm not really seeing my colleagues at once most often.
There is a report that the streaming of the meeting is not working correctly.
The meeting can also be streamed on YouTube, I think, on I don't know if that's working or not.
Is it the attorney's office recommendation that we recess and come back and intend to see whether this has resolved itself?
Well, folks, Mayor, I don't think things like this resolve themselves. And so it's a technology issue. I'm not, I'm not the correct.
Well, resolve themselves, whether the good people at CTN figure out a way to resume simulcast.
It does seem to be on YouTube right now.
Okay, YouTube is working.
It does seem to be on YouTube right now.
Thank you. Mr. Posthum, is that adequate for us to proceed?
Well, there's no requirement that the, well, right now it has to have some public function, and that is working.
I'm checking with CTN to see if it's on channel 16 right now.
Why don't we, Mayor, why don't you adjourn for five minutes and let's talk briefly about it? I think it's been properly posted. I'll talk with the clerk. Why don't we do that for a second?
All right, it's 7:28. Let's come on back at 7:35.
Jackie, can you?
Station, I just felt obligated to speak on this as a member of council to VicPAC. And these four members have been put forward, not just by four council members on this resolution, but also by the committee in the body VicPAC too. They come to us, recommended based on their skill sets, their interests, and their dedication to the commission, the work that's involved. Currently, there are four vacancies. We are eager to fill those four. This is a commission that requires extensive training and review and, and process issues, so to have four people come in at once is going to be an undertaking. But we felt that it would be good so that we can sync up all the training that's required and needed for these commissioners to serve and do a good job. So again, eager to start work with these new commissioners next year and, and get back to the work of the commission that is so vital for social justice issues. Thank you and look forward to everyone supporting this here tonight.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC two, resolution to approve a professional services agreement with Karasoff Technology Corp. for contract lifecycle management software and to appropriate $297,002.37 from the information technology fund balance. Move by. Counselor Dish seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of DC two. Councilmember Ramali.
I was wondering if staff was around for help to explain the type of cost benefits and efficiencies that we'll hope to experience from the adoption of this technology and software.
Mr. DeHoney, do we have a staff in light of the shifted agenda?
I'm moving over the IT director now.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Good evening.
Um, Councilmember Ramali, to answer your question, you know, we have, we, our contract lifecycle management process, we currently have 100, 120 people that participate in. And really, the goal here is to really look at how we do things and, and try to be more consistent. We have documentation that is inconsistent. We have documentation that is stored in multiple places. We have, we have multiple departments that have different processes, and really, our goal here is to create a, a more efficient workflow that is more consistent to solve some of the issues that I just, that I just brought up.
And does that transcend through the entire organization, or is it more heavy in some areas of our organization than others?
Well, the contract, yeah, so, so organizationally, there are some areas that do a lot of contract management, and there are a lot of areas that only do a few a year. But we are looking at it holistically for the entire enterprise, for the entire organization, to come up with a better, a better process that involves workflow that, that provides the consistency and the efficiencies as opposed, as opposed to having so many, so many different ways of doing things.
And when would this all be implemented and operational? Are we looking at a gradual implementation, or is this gonna be done all at once?
Yeah, the initial implementation, it, it will take a few months. And, and, and I, and, and depending on, so, so depending on where we land and how we're going to be doing things, because part of the process is to really design the new way of doing things. You know, we will come up with a new way of doing things, but also something that, that will be able to evolve over time as well. So, so the products that we're really putting in place provide the, the, the foundation and a consistency to be able to do things, and then it will evolve over time in the organization. So, so, but, but the initial goal is, is to look at our current process, use this new solution to create a new process, and then, and then see how well it works, but also gives us the ability to change it later on if we want, if we want to.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further, uh, further discussion. Counselmember Ramali?
Thank you. What is the life expectancy of that product? I mean, how, how long would something like this, I know it's new, but just to kind of get an idea of, for $300,000, how long are we going to be able to use this, this tool, do you imagine?
Yes, so, so, so there's really two, a couple, a couple components to it. Number one, it does use the DocuSign product. Okay, so the licenses that we're buying are our DocuSign licenses. The actual process and a workflow that we develop to, to use that software, that, that will last for as long as it needs to last. And as far as how long the DocuSign product will last, well, again, that, that just depends on us and how long we're willing to pay for the licenses to be able to use it. So, it is something that once it's implemented, it will be there for a long time, but we have to keep, and this is for three years, keep in mind too, and then we also have to keep the licensing up to date after three years and continue to pay it if we want to continue to use the solution.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight to answer those questions.
Counselor Rizwold?
Uh, yes, I was gonna say I have complete trust in your judgment, and I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. And then you said, then you said DocuSign, and I have used that a few times recently, and it really saves time. And you're right, it, it is consistent. It keeps everything organized, and so I definitely support this. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is a team effort. There's a lot, there's a lot of departments in the organization that will be working on this solution moving forward.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved with, we have 10, 11 council members present, all that's all satisfying, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight vote requirement. DC three, resolution to approve the employment of, the employment agreement with Athene Core as city attorney, moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Rizwold. Discussion, please, of DC three. I will, let me get my clock started. Just to say very briefly, or maybe not so briefly, that it has been a pleasure working with Ms. Core on her agreement, and I'm delighted to bring it forward to you today. It, of course, rhymes with Mr. Postum's agreement, but it has some provisions in it which, which are, are particular to Ms. Core with a particularity permitting her some, some additional professional interests to follow through with the expertise that she has accrued to date. The bottom line is, we at the City of Ann Arbor are incredibly lucky to have an attorney of Ms. Core's ability and integrity and good cheer choose to, to take a leap into public service. The, the work that the city attorney does is incredibly important. It's incredibly important for us as a municipal organization. It's incredibly important and meaningful for the, for the community as a whole, because it is crucial that, that the people, city government have the best legal advice possible in a way that, no, that just calls the balls and strikes. and strikes. And that does so with professionalism and ethics and diligence. And that is exactly the attorney's office that we have. Ms. Core, as she joins us, will, will have to fill some, some incredibly, incredibly big shoes, shoes of Mr. Posthumas. Mr. Posthuma has served the city well, ably with distinction and honor and, and wisdom for, for years. And I am confident that even as we, even as we regret his departure, that we will welcome Ms. Core's, Ms. Core's arrival, and that she and the office will, will thrive. I am simply delighted. Councilmember Griswold.
Yes, I want to acknowledge Mr. Posthuma's excellent succession planning, and I think that Ms. Core is an example of that. I'm going back to my notes from the interview on October 6, and there were a couple of things that she said that, that stood out. And I think that she will be an excellent employee as well as maybe a role model for council as well. She said that a leader is the glue that binds people together when she was talking about her team. She'd also talked about embracing differences and embracing discourse. So I look forward to welcoming her in April. Thank you.
Councilmember Hare.
Thanks. So I just want to let folks know, I'm, I'm not going to vote for this, and it has nothing to do with our candidate, but it has to do with some of the terms of the contract, including the salary. Depending on where you, where you look, salary range for public servants is somewhere between $45,000, $145,000 a year. The median's around $63,000. This, this salary offer of $210,000 is three times that. And I've stated on many occasions that I don't believe a public servant should be making more than $100 an hour, which is $200,000, no matter their expertise or experience. And so for that reason, I'm not, I'm not going to support this.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ramali.
I'll be supporting this here tonight. I think, you know, ultimately, you get what you pay for regardless if you're in the public sector and the private sector. I think this position is extremely important. One that has had a consistent leader now for nearly 20 years. I'll be looking forward to, to new leadership, a new direction, not to smudge Mr. Posthuma and his, his leadership and his accomplishments at, at the City of Ann Arbor. But I do think there could be, you know, help for, for others in our community who don't feel so empowered. And I believe this candidate here has potential to empower and one who will embrace discourse. That's something that unfortunately Ann Arbor City politics no longer provides in a free and safe environment. Like to have a consistent strike zone. Like to have somebody who calls balls and strikes in a consistent method and a consistent manner regardless of the political stripes that the body bears. So I'll be supporting this tonight. And I look forward to 2022. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I just, since we've heard such sunshine the last couple of comments, I just want to make sure that, that, that I take this opportunity to welcome Ms. Core to the city. I think this was an incredibly smooth process. It definitely exceeded my expectations. And she fortunately will inherit a, a legal staff and a department that's in just outstanding shape and has tremendous expertise. And, you know, and is grounded in integrity and, and public service. And I, I think she's going to be able to come in and, and, and do just a tremendous job. But she wouldn't, I wouldn't have such confidence in her ability to succeed if I didn't know that she wasn't inheriting, you know, such a strong department and know that she won't have to, to do a lot of that work because she's, she's coming to take over a team that's, that's so strong. So that's just going to enable her to help us implement the kinds of policies and, and keep the organization strong. And, and it's an incredibly important position. And I'm so glad that, and she comes into it eyes wide open. And I'm so glad that she's still willing to come. And look forward to her joining us in April.
Further discussion? Mr. Posthuma, do you want to talk a little bit about your transit, your succession plan?
You asked me to, after the discussion, just to focus on how this fits in with the succession planning. And with this, that, that I don't want to talk, to take the spotlight away from the candidate, because this is really her contract. But we've had a transparent process, one that has been fully supported by the admin committee throughout this past year. And so with that, the only thing that I would note is that as part of that planning, it was sort of contingent on an overlap period. And initially, it was going to be upfront through the candidate's job responsibilities. She cannot come until April 11. And I think that it is a mark of integrity that she's honoring those commitments with her prior work. That's something that was possibly anticipated. And so rather than an overlap at the beginning, although that transition frankly has already started through discussions with the, with the city attorney's staff, Mr. McDonald and Ms. Redabaugh have coordinated that. And I've had discussions. And we're beginning to get information prepared and ready for her. But I, as I told the admin committee, I am willing to, to stay on. My, my plan is to retire though, at a date certain, and that will be part of an agreement that you get next week, that there's a retirement date prior to her coming on, and that additional help would be done through a consulting agreement up to 10 hours a week for a period of time. That's something that she's requested with the mayor. I've agreed to that because it limits my time commitment after a date certain. And with, with that, that agreement will be for you, be before you. Next week, the administration committee reviewed it, and we're preparing that resolution. But tonight, this is really about her, her accomplishments and willingness to step forward. And as far as having a successor who has excellent qualities, excellent demeanor, and all of the things that, that I think will help lead this, the department and the city. And so, yes, as a number of you have, have spoken about, the succession planning here worked and gave you a candidate who's willing to come forward and do public service. She also happens to be in the fifth ward, and some of the council members seem to appreciate that. And so, and that is how it's been for the last 19 years, and at least that portion of it will continue. So that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have an additional question.
I do not. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramali?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Core, welcome aboard. DC four, resolution to approve the city's participation in the settlement of the national prescription opioid litigation. Move by. Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of DC four.
Thank you. This is welcome news. Unfortunately, it took the lives of, of many people literally in order to have this come forward in the way it is. I would hope that with the nearly million dollars that is proposed to come to the city through the settlements over the next 18 years, that we find ways to put this money towards restorative justice, social justice issues, such as a non-adversity response and others. There's the diversion or deflection program that our city prosecutor's office has established. I know it's too early to encumber these funds on any one of those particular issues, but I hope that, that the spirit of how those monies get spent in the future reflect the pain and destruction that was caused in this case. So hopefully goes back to repairing the damage that was done by the opioid epidemic. Thank you.
Further discussion? All favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC five, resolution to require masks in city council meetings. Move by. Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of DC five.
Well, we've, we've come a long way in a very short time. I, the, two years ago, I was told to not wear a mask at a council meeting because we didn't want to send the wrong message. And now we're talking about requiring everybody to wear a mask at a council meeting. And I think it's appropriate to, and it's actually an actual health measure that we're taking, since we're being forced to meet in public by the state to do this. I'm not sure we have the authority to do this, but I certainly understand where this is coming from. And I think it is a, you know, the, the proper thing to ask the public to do this. So I don't, I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to vote because I, again, I don't think we have the authority to do this, just like I'm not sure we have the authority to mandate, you know, proof of vaccination or any of these other things. So it's kind of, it's kind of a gray area for me, but I think it's the right thing to do. And I encourage the public to, to, to wear masks when they come to meetings and when they go to other public places too. It's, it seems to help. And I know I've been doing it, and I wish everyone would. So thank you.
Councilmember Griswold.
I'd like to be listed as a cosponsor, and I would encourage my colleagues to continue to advocate with our state representatives for online meetings as long as we are in the midst of a pandemic.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that this was added to our agenda quite late. We didn't have a chance to ask questions about it. My question, since I have, I have not studied the various CDC requirements for different environments, how did we, how did we land on the standards for conveyances and at transportation hubs? Is that, is that basically like the strictest standard? I mean, how, how did we land on that?
Mr. Frost?
Yeah, my understanding from speaking with safety is that that is essentially where we got our current guidelines for entry to City Hall from there, pretty much the only ones out there. And it talks about things like balaclava or a bandana is not sufficient, it needs to be a mask, you know, some substance. And it goes into some detail about what is and what isn't allowed. And it is a published order of the CDC. So it's something that we can refer to that is objectively there.
So has it been amended since February 1st, 2021? Or has that been, has it been consistent since February?
It does not appear to have been changed since then.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Ramali.
Thank you. Like many things, we'd like to pass, enforcement becomes an issue. How will we be able to enforce this? What's, what's the carrot and stick behind this? If, if folks who are in council chambers refuse to wear a mask, what, what then? What, how do, how do we enforce this, I guess, is the question. And, you know, I appreciate there's a separate space for folks to participate who, who choose not to wear a mask. But it just, I know, might, might not make sense for some people, but the, the segregation is just, it just, it, it, it's, it's, it's a concern of mine, is, you know, not, not, not enough to make me do something, like bring another resolution forward. But it's a concern of mine how we, how we address that. And, and, and perhaps it sets precedent for other, other issues and other things where we start having segregation based on certain things. So I guess the, the enforcement mechanism, how, how is it going to be enforced? And what will happen if people choose not to wear a mask in council chambers?
Mr. Frost?
So this would just be set up as any other council rule. So the chair of the meeting, the mayor would make that determination at the meeting whether the person was in reach of the piece and would then request their removal if they did not comply.
Would, would such a rule require two readings or some other sort? We're doing this just with a, with a resolution, the six vote requirement. Would such a rule that you described require two readings or a higher threshold of the body?
The council rule 19 for amending the council will provides that if the, if the change in the rule is provided with the agenda and other materials prior to the meeting, that it can be voted on, and it's a simple majority. So no suspension of the rules would be necessary in this case, since it was on the agenda before the meeting.
Yeah. And, and Councilmember, on that issue, whether or not an ordinance would hit, would, would further have to go along with that, we can look at that further on first blush. It didn't seem that way, but it, but it just came up today. So we will, we will advise further if anything else needs to be done.
Councilmember Hare.
Just wanted to, this is a question for the clerk, because we're asking the clerk to create some arrangements at City Hall. So in the final, or second, second to last resolve clause, it talks about establishing a mechanism for the public to comment remotely without entering City Hall and establish an area within City Hall where unmasked persons can watch and participate. Is that something that you are, we are anticipating you being able to do?
We already have the chamber set up for January 3rd for social distancing. And we, if your question is people can participate both remotely and in person, we're prepared for that. You're asking if there would be a separate space for?
Well, yeah. Yeah, it says establish an area within City Hall where unmasked persons can watch city council meetings live and provide comment. Where, where are we going to do that?
If, like Mr. Frost said, this resolution just came about today. So if, if it were to pass, we would have to designate a separate area. Right now, we, we are prepared for social distancing and availability for the public with masks to be in the chamber at a safe space.
I just wonder if there's going to be?
But we would have to.
Yeah. Is there going to be staff costs associated with that? We may have to monitor another space in the building or something, huh?
We were already. We were already prepared for, if there was overflow with the distancing requirements, that monitors would be set up in the atrium lobby.
Okay. Just want to make sure that it's all able to be worked by you. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm sorry, I'm about to take us into the weeds a little bit. But first I want to express appreciation for the thought about a secondary space. Because I hear what Councilmember Ramalwi is saying. I, I would feel a whole lot safer if we had an opportunity to allow participation with unmasked people away. The in the weeds question I have is I'm reading this resolution and we're referring to attendees of the meeting. Do I, I, I plan to continue to wear a mask. Is that the plan that members of council will be wearing masks? Or I see Councilmember Dish nodding. I, 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 I will not be comfortable not wearing a mask in a meeting as long as our meetings are. Is that? Does any, this is the whole of us, like all of us in, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep, 100. Councilperson?
I'm just recalling a meeting, a city council meeting where there was some disruption. There was a public commenter who, who identified himself as God and council members had removed themselves when, from the disruption. So would we be, would we have a similar response to that if someone was unmasked? I mean, we have the option of removing ourselves from chambers as well. And, and so it's not necessarily just removing someone who isn't following these expectations, these public health expectations, correct? We do.
Mr. Frost?
Sorry, I could not hear that last question.
Oh, I was just, I was just recalling a city council meeting I'd attended where a public commenter had identified themselves as God. And it was a pretty disruptive meeting and city council members had removed themselves from the meeting until the situation was resolved. I believe there's a certain expectation around conduct in giving public comments and, and public safety. So we do have options, correct, on how to manage these situations in person?
Yes, it's, it's, the running of the meeting is largely at the chair's discretion. So a recess could, could be taken if that was preferred. Or again, if the person is actually reaching the peace and disturbing the meeting, then they could be removed. But you do have options, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ramalwi?
Thank you. Just, just to further clarification, I don't know if I completely understood it. I think I did. But just for the viewing public, if a member of the public comes into council chambers and does not wear a mask, he will be asked to leave council chambers. Is that correct? By if the presiding officer so chooses to do so. And that person will be removed just as if somebody who was being disorderly in any other form, form, correct?
Yes, that's, that's the option this is putting on the table.
And, okay, well, I, I hope that we have all the alternative opportunities for people to engage themselves in a meeting so we don't violate any constitutional rights. I'm rather sure that people are already thinking of it. But I know, oh, at least I believe there'll, there'll be challenges to this. And just as, as long as that we can make sure that we are not infringing on any constitutional rights, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Councilman Griswold?
I think we have a responsibility to protect the public, anyone who is attending the meeting, just as we will protect ourselves. So I would, if there's someone without a mask or multiple people, simply removing counsel to another room, I hope is not our only action. I hope that we also address the safety of the participants by asking the unmasked person to leave council chambers.
Councilmember Redina?
Hey, Mayor, I just want to thank the sponsors for bringing this forward. I do think it is, you know, the minimum we can be doing to protect the community as we're being forced back into this in-person situation for our council meetings. I just want to echo Councilmember Griswold's comments from earlier that we are in this situation as a community because the legislature has failed to extend the, the, the ability of our meetings to continue to be remote and virtual, even in circumstances if we were to continue to see new spikes in the pandemic. And so I encourage members of the public, as Councilmember Griswold did, to continue to reach out to the legislature, to continue to ask them to, to follow the science and allow for, for these situations. If we were to see another spike with new variants and things like that, we are not able to go back into a virtual setting, not even under a local emergency order because the legislature wants to. And so I think that this is a good step. I'm confident that our attorneys are doing what they can. And I am comfortable with the provisions in here to make sure that we are continuing to make our meetings as accessible as possible while continuing to keep the community safe. And so thank you again for the original sponsors. And if possible, I would like to be at this as a cosponsor.
Further discussion? It is a, it's a shame that this is, that this resolution is a necessity, but it isn't a necessity because the legislature is forcing this council and a wide variety of boards and commissions to go back into in-person meetings at the, what is, you know, becoming another height of the pandemic. I, you know, I would call upon a legislature to, to look at the science, to, to provide for the public health, to enable us, as we have been doing for months now, more than a year, to conduct public meetings in a, a fully transparent, 100% safe, 100% safe manner. We've been doing it and it's been working. And it is, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a leadership gap that brings us here today. The legislature in Lansing needs to take needs to take their responsibility to maintain the public health seriously. This is not, this is not needs to take, needs to take the public health seriously. We will take the public health of our meeting spaces as seriously as we can. Of course, you know, we will be expecting folks to comply with this rule. I certainly will be wearing a mask. I would expect other council members to be wearing a mask. Just as it is one of our rules say to move, you know, to, if you bear signs to have them in the back. You know, when we ask people to comply with that rule, you know, it is, it is generally complied with. Similarly, if folks come unmasked, masks will be provided to them. They will not, you know, we're not going to be looking to escort people out on the jump. The point is masks are there for the, the attendees' safety. They're there for everyone else's safety. They're there for councils and for the attendant staff's safety. And we will ask, ask folks to comply, indicate to them that it is our expectation that they, they do so. In the absence of, of compliance, you know, in which, which I certainly conclude to be a disruption. There are a variety of steps that we can take. And, you know, it's my intention that, that we be incremental. Our goal is to, is to educate, to request compliance, not to, not to affect confrontation. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Councilwoman Griswold?
Yes.
Councilperson Song?
Yes.
Councilwoman Grant?
Yes.
Councilwoman Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ayer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Briggs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramalwi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Bowdre, are we up and running? On CTN?
Mayor, I'm Mayor, I'm hearing from CTN that they're not able to restore the feed. I, I have asked IT to prominently display on the website the other options for viewing, which would be at A2gov.org/watchCTN. Or I do have a, a link as well for the Zoom meeting. You could log into Zoom at A2gov.org/councilzoom.
So that, that will be on the, that will be on the website? All right.
Yes. So you can either watch the YouTube feed or through Zoom directly. But it's my understanding that CTN will not be able to restore the cable feed tonight.
Understood. Well, certainly we have had that, that stumble in the past and we have not, and we have not suspended or adjourned a meeting on the, you know, in, in the presence of that, of that stumble in the past when we were in person. And so I don't see any reason for us to do that here now, particularly when folks do have the ability to, to view us online and, and to hop onto the Zoom. So with that, let's, let's roll into the, if I recollect correctly, public hearing. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council in the community about a specific item on the agenda. That is to say, the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. Your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. If you wish to speak at a public hearing, please dial nine eight, eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven, eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. Once you're connected further, please enter meeting ID nine four two one two seven three two one four eight. Nine four two one two seven three two one four eight. Once you're connected, please wait until you, we come to the public hearing at which you wish to speak. Once we're in the public hearing at which you wish to speak, please enter star nine. Star nine will indicate to the clerk that you wish to speak. When it is your turn to speak, our clerk will identify you by the last three digits of your telephone number. When it is your turn to speak, you'll have three minutes in which to speak. So please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and see the floor. Public hearing number one, in ordinance to amend chapter 55, unified development code zoning of 32.6 acres from R3 townhouse dwelling to R4B multifamily dwelling, Mill Creek Town Homes rezoning, 3002 Chelsea Circle. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing, the Mill Creek Town Homes rezoning?
Mayor, I do have callers on the line, but they do not have their hands raised for this hearing.
See no one? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, resolution, resolution to approve Mill Creek Town Home Site Plan 3002 Chelsea Circle. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this Mill Creek Town Home Site Plan public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see anyone on the line with their hand up for this hearing.
I, I wanted to call in support of, this is a bit off topic, but it relates to the site plan. Site plan is good.
This is the site plan public hearing, sir.
Yeah. The site plan is good. I read the summary from the CPC and they, they suggest that it's great. And they're going to construct a lot of housing that's going to be good for an arborist housing shortage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hand up for this hearing.
See no one? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, in ordinance to amend chapter 55, unified development code rezoning of 0.61 acres in PUD planned unit development district to PUD planned unit development district, CASA, Dominix Development, PUD zoning and supplemental regulations. Eight hundred eight twelve eight fourteen Monroe, seven zero five Oakland, seven hundred and seven oh six Tappan. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Scott Monzel?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you, City Council. I'm Scott Monzel, address nine Jefferson Court, and I'm representing Green Planet. We're here to request a text amendment to the 2009 PUD CASA-Dominics language. It's a minor change in the text, but it retains the original intent of city council regarding the removal of curb cuts such that it only has to happen when there's actual construction. The issue originated because Green Planet applied for a special acceptance use for a marijuana dispensary. I'd like to make three points. First, the text that we've proposed retains the original intent of city council. The 2009 PUD was conceptual only. There was no construction proposed, no site plan submitted. And the owner noted it was a long-term plan. The concept envisioned infill construction building over parking spaces. And while the PUD does note that only two curb cuts would remain, the language states that all useless curb cuts shall be removed and the curb restored as part of the first PUD site plan approved within the district. That is, no curb cuts had to be removed until there was a PUD site plan, which at that point would have meant actual construction. Now, the city adopted regulations for marijuana dispensaries and required site plans for all applications. And then Greens, Green Planet submitted a site plan, but it didn't show any construction proposed. The staff then interpreted Green Planet's site plan as triggering the curb cut removal requirement. We believe this is an incorrect reading. The Green Planet site plan proposed no construction, no activity over the parking spaces shown in the PUD site plan from 2009. And the curb cut did not become useless. Therefore, this site plan was not the type that would trigger the curb cut removal as council originally intended. We've reviewed the minutes of the city council, planning commission staff from 2009. We've spoken with the architect, the attorney, and we believe that our interpretation is the correct one. The text amendment eliminates the ambiguity and returns the, the original concept. Second, and correlated to this, this is not a violation because of our conclusion.
Thirty seconds.
Site as it currently is constructed does not violate the PUD. And the third issue is safety. There have been no pedestrian safety incidents or problems related to this curb cut. Dominix has operated there for decades, Green Planet for at least 11 years, and they're not aware of any incidents. So there's no evidence to support that the curb cut presents a safety issue. I'd also object, there were no objections from the public at the citizens' meeting or in front of the planning commission. So we urge you to support the text amendment. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in one three two. You press star six, you can unmute your phone. Caller one three two, go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of council. My name is Dave DeVardy. I live at 1231 Baldwin in the Burn Spark neighborhood. I've served the community on the city council, on the planning commission, on the downtown development authority, and presently serve on the zoning board of appeals. I ask you tonight to pass the Dominix PUD zoning at this second reading exactly as it was approved on first reading on November night 15th. My father was dominant. I grew up working at Dominix throughout the 1960s and 70s, and I'm very familiar with this site. I hope you were able to read earlier. I hope you were able to read earlier today the letter I sent to all council members before this meeting. When Dominics became one of the very first PUD zoning districts in the city, policymakers at that time considered that providing residential housing as part of a mixed-use development was a community priority. The curb-cutting question serves parking that supports the residential uses at this site. The asphalt in parking at that site predate the zoning codes and is thereby grandfathered in. The existing PUD, as it is now, has a zero setback along Monroe Street, further supporting parking in this area. The PUD zoning provides multiple community... Or this PUD zoning provides multiple community benefits, including, among other things, commercial uses, affordable, and I emphasize affordable, residential housing, currently eight units within these parcels, and parking to accommodate the needs of the tenants. In addition, the property owner, my brother Rich, has agreed to provide the additional public benefit of reducing stormwater discharge by removing the impervious surface in the parking area along Monroe. This is a win for the city. It's a win for the community. I urge you to approve this PUD at second reading unchanged from what you passed at the first reading a month ago. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 490, do you have a comment? Press *6 to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Michael McLeod. My wife Melanie and I are the owners of Green Planet Patient Collective. We have operated Green Planet at 700 Tappan since 2010. We've always complied with all the rules and regulations and have not had any problems or issues. When Green Planet Collective's SEU was approved in 2018, we did not agree with the stipulations regarding the removal of the curb-cutting driveway because of the submission of an administrative site plan. At that time, city staff told us that our only option to contest the stipulation was to amend the PUD by petitioning City Council. Since the PUD amendment process was expected to take a long time, city staff suggested we could submit a site plan showing the closure of the curb cut, and then they would allow us to proceed with the new licensing process. We agreed to this and offered to post a bond. However, the city never requested the bond. We retained Scott Monzel to assist us with the process to amend the PUD in 2018. Since that time, we've worked in good faith with city staff, our landlord, to bring this petition to City Council. Despite several delays, including COVID, we've worked diligently to get to this point. Green Planet respectively request the Ann Arbor City Council support the proposed text amendment for CASA-Dominics's plan development. Our neighbor need not lose her legal parking space because her application required a site plan. The site plan was administrative in nature without any proposed changes or construction. We also request the Ann Arbor City Council support CASA-Dominics's requests to allow parking to continue at 700 Tappan. To our knowledge, there has never been any pedestrian incidents or issues with the curb cut. Green Planet Patient Collective would restrict parking to staff only and replace the impervious asphalt with pervious pavers. As an additional benefit to the city, Green Planet will construct a rain garden on the northeast corner of the property to minimize any stormwater runoff and to serve as a demonstration product for the community. For your time.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 963, do you have a comment? Press *6 to unmute your phone. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jim Galloway. I'm calling in behalf of 700 Tappan Street. My father was a dentist there, Danny Galloway. He had his practice that he... I'm sorry, his practice was there at 700 Tappan Street from 1967 forward. And I used to take care of the outside of that property. My sister would clean the inside of the building for the dental practice. And there was an asphalt parking lot on the north side of the building and on the west side of the building. So I just want to make it clear that that has always been there. That's nothing new. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 021, do you have a comment? Press *6 to unmute your phone, caller. Caller with the phone number ending in 021, do you have a comment? Caller with the phone number ending in 083, do you have a comment? Caller 083, press *6 to unmute your phone. Caller 083, go ahead, do you have a comment?
Hello, yes, Alan Haber. I've been a... I hope so. Am I being heard?
You are audible, sir.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Thank you. I've been a patron of Dominics since the 50s at least. And I knew the Dominic elder and Rich now in the house next door and the parking place I think is being referred to. And that's never been any kind of problem. And so I hope that you'll... These are really great citizens of Ann Arbor, and I hope that you will, whatever is the request that they have to maintain their situation and not require some unnecessary alteration. I hope you will follow their desire. They're splendid people and have always been a benefit and a credit to Ann Arbor. And that little space has always been a welcoming space. So I encourage you to follow the desires of the occupants there. It seems that Zoe doing in the rain garden and the pervious surfaces, all to the good. So I'm just tuned in here. I'm glad I could say something to the benefit of Dominics. They're great people, the fathers and the children, the youth. And so, good wishes to you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any other callers with their hands up at this time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this public hearing? See no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four, in ordinance to amend, Sections 2, 25, 2, 26, and 2, 3, 8 of Chapter 27, Water Service, of Title II of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Caller with the phone number ending in 228. Do you have a comment?
Caller with the phone number ending in 228. I'm trying to turn off.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to help people to go to smarteducationnetwork.com. Hello.
Hello, please consider turning off your computer sound.
Rather than using...
Hello, please.
Hello?
Yes, you are audible, ma'am.
Yeah, I was trying to mute my thing. I didn't think I was going to be the first caller, so. Yeah, I didn't put my timer on. Did you get out a timer, right? Okay, I'm a smart... My husband has a timer on. Okay, I tell people to go to smarteducationnetwork.com. It's a local group to get more information about, well, it's called Smart Meters. And I take a photo of our gas meter every month, and I send it to them. And so I don't understand why we can't just take a picture of our water meter. And I go into the public hearing and I'm thinking, I don't want any constant metering. And I don't want any meters in the mess. And I'm just curious if they found that they catch fire like the electric water meters do and who takes the liability for that? And then they've had so many defective water readings over in Ferndale, just like with the electric meters, they like overcharge people that they replaced 98% of the readers because they were so defective. And in Ferndale, they charged you a $10 a quarter fee. And in Madison, Wisconsin, they either charge you a $50 one-time fee to opt out or a $4 per month fee. And I guess those are most of my comments. Yeah, I just want to have like an option of just like taking a photo of the meter every quarter, and I don't want constant metering. And the charges they have in Ann Arbor are just like really outrageous compared to other cities. And yeah, but the fire issues, it's a big issue. Whenever there's anything, any story on TV about a fire, I always see, you know, I always listen very carefully to see if it started with a smart meter. Like they had that whole thing on the Oprah was interviewing the person, and she lost her whole family on Christmas Day because her mother and all of her children because of a smart meter fire. And I always listen very carefully on the news to see if a fire is caused by a smart electrical meter. And yeah, I don't understand why the fees are so high in Ann Arbor compared to other cities I've checked out. And people should check out the smartmetereducationnetwork.com. About it. I got everything in in two minutes.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number 021, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My most sincere apologies. This is Richard DeVarty, and this is the first time I've ever done this. And I just couldn't get through when I was pressing *6. Can you still listen to my comments?
For my part, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have any objection on that, since it is a petitioner? All right, Mr. DeVarty, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Richard DeVarty. I am the owner of 700 Tappan, as well as the other five buildings within the PUD district, which includes Dominics Restaurant. 700 Tappan is currently leased to a medical clinic, which is permitted use. This address has served as dental offices for at least three different dentists, as well as a podiatrist. There has been parking on the north side of this building since at least 1962. The PUD permits residential use as well. This location has been both residential and medical, and at times in tandem. Residential use requires that parking be provided. The fact that Dominics Restaurant has the best health department record in the county is without a doubt solid proof of my personal dedication to people's health and safety. To the best of my knowledge, over the past 60 years, there has never been a pedestrian automobile injury on this site. Just shy of six and a half years ago, I contracted with Cadillac Asphalt Company to remove the crumbling and deteriorating asphalt on the north side of the building. This was done as a repair with immediate concerns for public safety and minds. At that point in time, it had not occurred to me to replace the decades-old asphalt with pervious pavers. Parking on the north side of 700 Tappan has existed for so long that I would consider it to be illegal, non-conforming use, certainly grandfathered by now. Currently, the long-term lease provides for two parking spots. This parking area also facilitates necessary utility access for DTE, AT&amp;T, and Comcast, as well as for the U of M Electrical Crew. Currently, there are wires running through that driveway from a utility pole to four separate buildings. I fail to recognize how prohibiting parking there would serve as any kind of a benefit whatsoever to our community. Parking should remain in place. It always has been, and the medical clinic should be approved for license renewal, which serves the community as a whole. By passing the first reading amendments to the PUD, thereby allowing the curb cut to remain for now, validation of the special exemption use permit would no longer require the removal of the curb cut. Thank you very much for your time, and once again, I apologize for not knowing how to get in.
Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this public hearing? That is to say, public hearing with respect to water service.
Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hands up for this hearing, and I will report that we are back on cable TV.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much, and thank you to the good folks at CTN for jumping on this so quickly. See no one, public comment is... This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number five, in ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 113 Regulation and Use of Model Glues and of Title IX Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Michelle Hughes, you have a comment?
Hi. This is Michelle Hughes, and I hope that when we're looking at our city ordinances, we can put our progressive hats on and realize that it's time to end the war on drugs. We have a law here on the books about people sniffing glue. And the proposed ordinance doesn't do anything to help people. It will... What we have... The thing is, people use drugs for a lot of reasons. And people... You know, one of the main reasons people use drugs is because there are hard things going on in their life, and it's their way of coping. It doesn't help people to arrest them and put them through the criminal justice system, even if we're putting them through a diversion court. That's still not something that can help people. If we want to give people help, we could just give them help. But instead, arresting people and putting them through a criminal diversion court is going to make their lives more difficult. It's going to put them under constant police surveillance. It's going to make them take drug tests, go to court-mandated meetings. It's going to make their lives more difficult. And I don't think we should be thinking of ourselves as progressive if this is what we're doing to people who need help. So I suggest that the City Council should instead pass an ordinance decriminalizing the use of glue. And consider, as we go through the other city ordinances, that we should decriminalize other things that it doesn't help, where it doesn't help people to have them criminalized. I'm particularly thinking about sex work and any other drugs that might be specifically listed in our city ordinances. And I specifically challenge City Council to show their commitment to do this by voting no on the proposal tonight. Then you might have some sort of idea that, oh, well, you know, we'll come up with that ordinance later, but for now, we'll just pass this little simple clerical technical update, and then we'll come back later and fix it. I don't trust that. I want you to vote no on this right now, and then I want you to come back and decriminalize drugs. And because another thing is that this ordinance here, it's not just a simple technical clerical update because it adds new glues that were not invented at the time the law was written, effectively creating more drugs that are criminalized. If you pass this law, you will have criminalized additional drugs. And that's not the direction we need to be heading. When the City Council recently voted to decriminalize psilocybin and other psychedelic drugs, like, that's the direction we need to be headed. When the state voted to legalize marijuana, that's the direction we need to be headed because that's the direction where people can... If people have problems, they can get help. If people are put under additional police surveillance, that's not helping them. So please, decriminalize glue rather than criminalizing additional glues tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ashley Shuket, you have a comment?
Hello, my name is Ashley Shuket, and I am part of Public Health Awaken Michigan and have been involved in harm reduction services for over two decades. I first want to thank Ann Arbor's thoughtfulness to update the ordinances using gender neutral language and that they are easy to read. These are important steps for equity. However, these fall short on creating a true health centered environment for residents and visitors. I raise concerns to the Ann Arbor City Council and solidarity with other community members operating in the city and throughout the state, as well as with the community most impacted that cannot be here as the practices by law enforcement related to arresting people for possession of substances such as glues and inhalants and their equipment raises the detrimental effects of increased risk for bloodborne infections, sepsis, and fatal drug poisonings. In addition, adding more substances to be illegal, such as inhalant litter that was brought up during the first reading will only increase to avoid police interactions, tickets, arrests, and jail time, especially amongst our individuals without secured housing and are forced to use in public spaces. When substances get banned, more potent and untested substances are created. Look at the overdose crisis that we're currently facing. If an officer has the authority to stop, search, harass, and arrest people for possession of public health tools otherwise known as paraphernalia and various substances, this is criminalizing a health issue and demonstrates another level of racial and economic inequities within the city. It is my hope that a pragmatic approach to use to assess these concerns related to all ordinances involving the criminalization of substances by voting no tonight and implement a public health health centered approach to substance use, including glues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Goodman, do you have a comment?
Hi, yes, um, I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the last two callers. I I can't speak with the same level of expertise as as the last caller in particular, but you know, I really do think it's a bit crazy that we're talking about progressive values in rewriting a punitive ordinance criminalizing substance abuse to just have gender gender neutral language, but really not change the substance of it at all. Sounds exactly like the sort of performative, really faux progressive nonsense that sometimes makes Ann Arbor a bit of a laughing stock in terms of our politics and the way that these discussions go. I did hear the discussion last week about diversion programs. And you know, yes, those are better than just throwing people in prison. There's no doubt about that. But they're still based on this premise that we can only get these people the help they need if we retain the implicit or even explicit threat of the carceral system. I don't believe that. I think you all have the opportunity to do something better here, and I hope you will take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any other callers with their hands up at this time.
See, no one. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number six in order to repeal and replace Chapter 115 Weapons and Explosives of Title IX Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see any callers on the line for this hearing.
See, no one. This public hearing is closed. A1. We have before us the special session of December 1 and regular session meeting minutes September 6, 2021. May have a motion, please do approve these minutes. Move by. Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Dish. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code zoning of 32.6 acres from R3 Town House Dwelling to R4B multifamily dwelling Mill Creek Town Homes rezoning 3002 Chelsea Circle. Moved by. Councilmember Redina, second by Councilmember Grand. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a really brief question if staff is available, and I apologize for not submitting this ahead of time. Um, so I guess I I am wondering, this is related to um, actually the nearby crosswalks. I know there there is a park across the street, and I guess I'm wondering if in this process um, of upzoning this area, I think this is overall, this is a positive. I'm going to support this. But I guess I'm wondering what considerations are made for additional pedestrian safety in the area? When when something like this is happening, or is that treated completely as a separate a separate workflow? And and I am wondering, because I know that I have I have heard from residents already about concerns of pedestrian state safety on Stone School where where vision can some their vision of pedestrians can sometimes be obstructed. There are some curves. It's a pretty wide road, and now we're going to see probably increased pedestrians crossing Stone School to access parks. So if there is any indication on whether or not that's being evaluated currently or will be in the near future, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Redina. Uh, I will have to represent the traffic engineers for this. I do know that this project completed and submitted a robust traffic impact study. And what I know about it is that the this site plan is focused on improvements and making Birch Hollow a more complete street. I think that the traffic study did touch on Stone School, but that any improvements to Stone School would be um, separate and would probably be undertaken by the city and not this and not this because of the causation link, because this project would not be triggering the need for improvements on Stone School. That need is somewhat separate. I would throw I would do one caveat, though, that I am speaking on of what I know of what the traffic engineers would say. I have had recent conversations with the traffic engineers responding to some citizens and residents who posed questions, and I know that the traffic engineers I think have Stone School on their radar for future pedestrian improvements.
Thanks. That that is, I think, my understanding as well, and I'll continue to follow up with them. I was just wondering considerations of this project. Thanks.
Councilmember Dish.
I wanted to speak very briefly about the merits of this proposal. It will. It is an infill project, which is to say that it uses existing utilities to achieve greater density. This is something that we rarely have an opportunity to see. So um, the planning commission was very happy to see this. The project also creates relative affordability by by virtue of the location of the project and the size of the new proposed apartment units. They will um, all be one bedroom rentals added to the existing supply at this development, which is mostly two bedroom town hall townhomes, some one bedroom and some three bedroom. So this will be a form of housing that we have need for. In addition, the developers significantly upgrading stormwater. There is at Mill Creek now, as in so many places in the city, minimal stormwater treatment, and they are proposing two new underground detention systems with controlled release to the city storm system. So um, these are, there are many benefits to be realized, including affordable housing, but also some other benefits regarding stormwater, which is a certainly a perpetual concern in this era of climate change.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ramai.
Thank you. I will be supporting this as I did first reading. The the petitioner did have an experience with their recently adopted EV charging ordinances as it relates to site plan review reviews on new developments as such. I was wondering if staff was here tonight to answer a question on, or at least describe to us what our recently adopted ordinance requires in cases as such where you have an existing development that wishes to add to the density of the property. And the site plan review process triggered the ordinances that govern EV installations. And in this case, there was some modifications made as a result of the burden that was going to be placed on this infill project. And again, if I can perhaps have staff explain to us what happened there and illuminate the issues that we may have going forward with other developments that are akin to this.
Thank you. The EV parking ordinance is in is triggered with a site plan for city council approval. So site plans for administrative approval, sometimes called administrative amendments, but they are specifically a site plan for administrative approval and site plans for planning commission approval do not trigger the EV ordinance, but site plans for city council do. And when you submit a site plan for city council, then the EV parking requirements apply to all of the existing and proposed parking, and that is the current language. So for this project, the applicants came in came in and um, and offered that they would provide um, all of the EV parking requirements for the new parking for the newly proposed parking and in the area where they were working. But as an infill project, they were basically not touching the rest of the site. And they asked if they could, they applied for a variance. And this is not the exact wording of the variance, but essentially they asked for a variance to not touch the parking lot that was existing, but only apply the regulations to the new parking spaces. And they received that variance. They were part of three different large sites that were all site plans for city council approval that were existing developments doing some form of infill or additions, not brand new vacant construction. And they all went to the ZBA, and they got different results, actually. But that concentration of three projects for the same subject or the same section of code did prompt the ordinance, the planning commission ordinance revisions committee to start looking at um, the EV parking ordinance for possible tweaks, and that work is still ongoing. I hope that answered your question, and if I'm not clear, then
It did. It did help. I'll let my colleagues speak, and then I'll have another question. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Um, I'm just thrilled when we hear about compromises and and developers that are willing to work with staff to to come forward and and make this work. And really, I just wanted to welcome all the future residents to the ward. Really excited to see this. I'm fortunate.
Councilmember Ramai.
Thank you. I know recently here we discussed revising the process where site plans would not come to city council for review. You had described this project having that requirement. Could you explain and refresh my memory, I guess, and others where we're at with that last initiation of not requiring projects to come for site review, site plan review. Would this project essentially not have come to council under the proposed changes? Or would it still have come to council based on those recent change proposed changes in the in the site plan review process?
I do know that my colleague and coworker Matt Kowalski is in is a is in the waiting room, and he is spearheading that ordinance amendment project. However, I can answer. I think I can answer this. This site plan before you is associated with a rezoning, and rezoning is a legislative decision, so it would still come to city council. The rezoning and the site plan would come. If they were proposing townhouses, or if the rezoning occurred a few years ago, and they were doing this, then the site plan alone, because that is an administrative function, reviewing the site plan, checking for code, that would now become a site plan for city planning commission approval. But um, as it stands right now, because it's associated with that rezoning and the legislative decision, it would come to city council.
Thank you for keeping the lines clear. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Nelson.
Since Councilmember Ramai brought it up, I I thought I would explain it in a little more detail what happened at the ZBA. We had accurate what Alexa said about the um, the multiple petitions around the EV port parking ordinance, and um, this particular variance was different from all the others in that there was a commitment to put in EV infrastructure at some capacity. You know, there are three categories, I think, the completely installed and the EV ready and just being wired for it, or however it's described. That infrastructure, some level of that infrastructure is going into every single parking space of the new parking that is constructed, so that they're doing actually more than simply applying the standard, the ordinance standard to the new parking. They're they're if if they were to do that, they would be actually exceeding that standard because they're basically they're they're saying there's a huge disincentive to rip up existing pavement, but anything that they're laying down new, they're understanding that they're they're doing everything they can to make sure that the infrastructure is in place everywhere they're putting it new. I hope that helps. Thanks.
Councilmember Hayner.
Thanks. Now, you know, I was just reading one of the petitions that we received in opposition to this project, and it does point out a few things that are interesting, and one that brings up a question. It does. It says, other than density, that this project proposed site plan along with these change of zoning fails to contribute to A20. There's no solar, no exceptional energy efficiency or insulation, no handicap accessible units, EVA accessible units. You know, that's not great. I do. I do wonder sometimes what what are we trying to optimize for with our kind of haphazard planning decisions and our our kind of stale comprehensive plan that we have? You know, are we optimizing for place or quality of life or just density? So I I I think that's a legitimate question and concern they have. The other thing that they said, which I think needs to be pointed out that if we rezone this, then it's going to lead to the potential for a buy right reconstruction of what exists in this new style. 102 apartments, and then the rest of the property can then be redone as they see fit to this this new standard. And so it's just this things that I think that this letter was was pretty accurate. It points out things that we need to you know, really consider when we look at a rezoning like this, like what's going to happen to this this property in the future? Is it enough? Is it not too much? And so on. I I don't think we weigh these things thoroughly.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramai?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes. Well, she carries.
B2, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code rezoning of 0.61 acres from PUD Plan Unit Development District to PUD Plan Unit Development District Casa Dominic's Development PUD zoning and supplemental regulations 800812814 Monroe 705 Oakland 70706 Tappin moved by. Councilmember Redina, second by Councilmember Grand. Discussion, please, of B2. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. And I'm not sure that I know we received just a minor tweak that clarifies the initial intent of the compromise language that we worked out. that we worked out from the last meeting from planning staff today. So if everyone looks in their packet, you can see that there is the number three Dominix PUD supplemental regulations modified after first reading with additional staff amendment. Within that document, there's some language from staff that clarifies the removal of the parking. So you know, and not just that it's going to be impervious surface, but if you look at G two vehicular parking, the last sentence, there's a brief, parking is prohibited between the structure at 700 Tappan and Monroe Street. So I'd like to move that amendment.
Seconded by Councilmember Dish. Is that amendment friendly to the body? Was there a question on that? I guess, okay, I have Councilmember Grand still on the floor, still having the floor on that. If she wishes, then Councilmember Ramali for a question.
No, I think it, you know, it's, it's coming from a conversation that, that I've had with staff and they, at our last council meeting realized that, that while we were discussing the intent, the language didn't necessarily match the intent. So I think it does now. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Ramali, on the amendment.
So this is suggesting that the parking would be prohibited that is now currently allowed on Monroe or on Tappan. I apologize. Parking is prohibited between what structure, or structure, what, what parking spot in particular we speaking of here? If I can ask, and I know it's my, it's late and it's minute, but just clear for better understanding.
Mr. Kowalski?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. We're talking about the space in between the, the structure at 700 Tappan and the sidewalk along Monroe. So there's a space that runs kind of parallel where that's, that, we're not talking about the curb cut itself and the space that goes behind 700 Tappan, which was the residential space. This, this motion language only refers to the space in between 700 Tappan and the sidewalk along Monroe. So it would leave the curb cut in place and the parking directly behind the building at 700 Tappan.
Thank you.
On the amendment, Councilmember Dish.
I think this is on the amendment. Mr. Kowalski, I wonder if you could clarify, there were some statements made in the public comment that, that asphalt parking had been on the property for so long. We heard 1962 as the date of origin, that it was prior to any zoning and so should count as a non-conforming use. Was that a correct claim?
I can say it does go back as far as we could look in the aerials. And yes, that's, the petitioner has, has stated that. I don't have any reason to doubt that in verifying the, the aerials, but again, our aerials go back as far as like 1980 or so. But yeah, it looks like it's been in place for a long time. Previous documents indicate that it was in place.
Does that mean that it was permitted or just that it was in place?
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean it was permitted. I mean, it was, we have records that was put in there. It could have been put in before it was against code, but there's no records of it actually being put in place. So as far as how it was done originally, I can't speak to that because it's been in there so long.
If you were to put something like that on your property, would you need to have a building permit or something like that?
At this time, yes, it would require probably a minimal grading permit. Because to install any kind of parking like that, I mean, although now we wouldn't permit that in the open space. But, but again, it would, if somebody's installing that surface, yeah, it would, it would trigger probably grading permit for the grading.
But it might not have back in 1962.
Correct. I can't speak to what it was, what the requirements were back in 62.
Further discussion on the amendment, Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions and I know I've spoken to my ward colleague about this a lot. I will admit I'm still slightly aware of this simply because I, I do find, you know, the longevity of these spots to be fairly compelling with what we're hearing right there. But I also am concerned, I went and toured the site. I have pictures that I was just reviewing again. I'm also concerned about the safety of pedestrians there because they are fairly, they're not very deep spots. I know that they're put side by side. If there were cars parked side by side, the deepest car would probably have to drive down the sidewalk to get out the curb cut. All of those things are relatively concerning to me, but I guess going back to the initial point, is it accurate that none of the, the site plan that was submitted that, that, that activated this entire conversation again? Is it accurate that there were no changes? There, there have been no changes to the buildings themselves. It was, it was largely the administrative requirement of submitting it for the dispensary that triggered this?
Yeah, well, yes, there, there was, yeah. And as part of the special exception use, yeah, the condition was put in there for that removal. That's correct. And then the site plan was modified to reflect the removal of that curb cut, the site plan for 700 Tappan.
And then I guess my second question goes because I, I know that submitting the site plan and all of those things were a requirement for Green Planet to be, to achieve their license and to be able to exist there to begin with. If we do not, I mean, I guess if we, if we don't remove this parking, there is no risk of to Green Planet itself, correct? I mean, Green Planet would not be at risk of losing any ability to continue functioning should, should parking there continue to be permitted.
If the, if the parking is permitted, continued to permit, well, they, they still have to go back to the planet commission for the special exception use. The special exception use again was conditioned upon that curb cut being removed in the site plan that was submitted showing that. So either regardless of council's actions here tonight, they would have to go back and still get approved from planet commission for that, to allow a special exception use based on that curb cut remaining. Because the conditions for that existence special exception used were not, do not apply anymore.
And, and that's, that's true of either outcome on this amendment though, correct? Because we would be maintaining the curb cut.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that we read the topic of the long history of that pavement being there because I know it was upsetting to a few people who are quite a bit older than me, who knew that the, the history of that pavement long in existence. And it was somewhat offensive to hear someone at this table suggest that the DeVardis had snuck it in or installed it secretly. And like, we don't even know when they installed it. Well, they didn't. I, I questioned the staff assertion that the intention was to prohibit parking because the language that we approved at first reading was really about impervious surface. And my understanding of it when we passed it was pretty clear that we were, we were looking at the value of taking out pavement. And we, we didn't even discuss parking versus no parking. And so I guess I would suggest that if we're really going to accept that as just a minor change, that was the intent anyway. I would dispute that and I would want this to go back to first reading. Um, I, it just, it's, I, we have an opportunity as this body. I know that we're having conversations about delegating that responsibility, but we have an opportunity to show discretion in special situations where a place is, is a community asset. And I mean, in this particular place, it's sort of like a community tradition. And I think at the last time we discussed this, I pointed to a location in Ward four where there are a number of places, a number of standards and regulations that are being bent and broken to accommodate the special nature of York on Packard. And I think when we're having conversations about a place like Dominix, we really are talking about that specific location and the specific aspects of that location that make it special. And I've heard from a lot of people who are just puzzled as to why we are picking on them. It doesn't feel sensible. It doesn't feel like it makes any sense at all, like, because there's no changes happening to anything. And we are asking them to upend the way their property has, has been for years and years. So I, I'm curious to see where this discussion goes. I would like to see us pass the same language that we discussed at first reading, simply because we didn't actually visit the topic of parking specifically. We only talked about impervious surface. Thanks.
Councilmember Grant.
Thanks. As someone who worked on this compromise with staff, I can speak to my own intent, which was to preserve the parking for the resident and to remove the other parking. So, you know, it's my understanding that, that the petitioner was told many years ago that this parking had to be removed and that the curb cut had to be removed. And when, and they didn't move forward with that in spite of being told that they needed to. But when this issue came up with the resident, with it really being a benefit for her to have access to parking so that an elderly disabled resident can continue to have access to her residence, that seemed reasonable to compromise because I think that's, that's something that we can all understand. And ultimately Planning Commission will decide in this case, if, if they want to go forward with our recommendation. So given that we know that Planning Commission felt very strongly about removing the parking and the curb cuts, I feel that a compromise is a way that, that we can really advocate for this resident and still hold true to our values of pedestrian safety. So, so I can only speak to my intent, but I think this really matches it. And I'm, you know, certainly not, don't think that we need to have another discussion at the council table about, about what's a, you know, relatively small project.
Councilmember Hayner.
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, in reading through the various petitioners' letters and my notes from the public hearing on this, it's kind of confusing because these are, these are neighbors who are trying to work it out here for them. I, I find that Mr. DeVardis, that David DeVardy, rather, has consideration that the removal of this parking space at this text change would, would drive, you know, I, I think it's a legitimate concern that he places a value on that parking space and it's a taking by the city. And so, you know, for, I, I think that's, I think that's a pretty accurate view that he has. This spot does have value. It is there. It has been there forever. And all of a sudden we're asking somebody who has really not violated any kind of change or even affected any changes to their own property to, to, to take something from them that has value to their business. Doesn't seem right to me. Especially when we don't even make any consideration whatsoever for new construction to, to, you know, add value to the community. So I'm not going to support this text change.
Councilmember Ramali.
Yeah, thank you. We were still talking about the amendment, correct?
Correct.
And, and we're talking about the, the changes in page four, section two, parking to be prohibited between the structure at 700 Tappan and Monroe Street, correct? That, that's what this conversation is about currently.
That's my belief.
Just wanted to be clear.
Councilmember Grant, that, that, Councilmember Grant, does that accurately describe the amendment?
It does. I would maybe add that it's staff's language, but yes.
My apologies. Thank you.
Just, it's fine. You know, I just, it's a little unusual how this is coming to us. Usually there is an amendment after first reading, perhaps between first and second, and changing any of the text that comes forward at second reading. So this is a little unusual that it's been changed without any motion being made in doing so between the two readings. But, uh, so I'm a little confused as to the procedure of it all. But in this case, I am convinced of, of the arguments that the petitioner has been, has put forward of placing a, a value of parking on this, on this parcel of land and, and taking it away at this particular juncture is, is a new element. And, and one that I don't feel supportive here tonight. If, if it was discussed at first reading or something else, or maybe postponing this, but I don't feel at this point I would move to support this amendment without having further time to consider. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment. Roll call vote please. Start with Councilmember Griswold.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramali?
No.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, um, I was a little concerned about the characterization that the business in our community, our property owner was getting picked upon. I wonder if Mr. Kowalski could just speak a moment to kind of the process briefly to how this got here and if there was any unusual emphasis on this particular property owner or anything that we were asking of them that we wouldn't have another.
Sure. Thank you. Um, yes, the, the reason why it's here before you tonight actually is, is not a result of staff initiation. It's because of the special exception use that the property owner at 700 Tappan has. That special exception use has a requirement in its approval to close the curb cut. And then in reflecting upon the zoning, the zoning also has a requirement that only two curb cuts can serve the district. So in signing off for zoning compliance, it's, it's not in compliance with the PUD regulations. We couldn't sign off on the zoning for that as well as in addition with the special exception use that, that triggered this whole discussion that again, as I mentioned previously, is contingent upon that curb cut being closed. So that's really the reason why it's here before you tonight. And yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
So a, a great deal has been made of the fact that this site plan is not the kind that would trigger the curb cut removal because it was an administrative site plan required for the special exception use. But at the time that Planning Commission considered that special exception use in 2018, they were amending a PUD and they felt that the public benefit of the original PUD was underspecified. And so when Planning Commission granted the SEU, it required the special exception use for marijuana, for the marijuana facility, it required the removal of the curb cut to provide the public benefit to disallow the parking in that asphalt place. And they also asked for the removal of the parking at that time in 2018. So we're back in 2021 with what Planning Commission regarded as just a failure to comply with removing the curb cut, which is specified in the original PUD and which in the discussion of the special exception use, they decided to consider that as an element of public benefit. And then there just were a lot of concerns about the, about the asphalt parking being something that had never been approved. I think we've gotten some further clarification around that that might be useful to planning in considering this. But I don't want people to have the impression that this requirement to close the curb cut was somehow triggered in a, in a sort of a gratuitous way, I think I should say, or an accidental way, an unintentional way.
Further discussion of the main motion is amended. Councilmember Ramali.
Thank you. At first reading, I didn't fully understand the nuances of everything when it came to this. And I voted against it. Since then, I went to the when it came to this, and I voted against it. Since then, I went to the site, walked it, looked at it, spoke with petitioners and others in the area to get a better understanding and then understand the nuances of why this is in front of us and the history behind this property and the PUD, the supplemental regulations. And in, in the process of it all, I have changed my mind. I will be supporting this here tonight. The only thing that has happened here was the activity occurring in one of the buildings that has triggered this whole process and requiring and asking for this curb cut to be removed. If there was work being done on the building, changes being done to the structure, I would have a different take on it. But just because of the use in one of these buildings has, has triggered this all. As best as I can summarize it, it just doesn't warrant the, the, the reduction of the curb cut based on its proximity to the corner and everything else that has been described in relation to the property. So, I will be supporting this tonight. And I, I just believe there's, there's discretion that council has and it should exercise discretion in order to have good government, common sense government. And all too often, I think that's missing in some of the decisions government makes. Frankly, doesn't have a whole lot of common sense applied to it. So, I think in this case, we should be empowered with the discretion that we have and make sensible decisions based on the realities on the ground. Thank you.
Further discussion of the main motion. Roll call vote please, starting with Counselor Griswold.
Counselor Griswold?
Yes.
Counselor Song?
Yes.
Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Counselor Adina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Iyer?
Yes.
Counselor Nelson?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Ramahi?
Yes.
Counselor Hayner?
No.
Counselor Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
B three in ordinance to amend sections two, two, five, two, two, six, and two, three, eight of chapter 27, Water Service and Title II of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by. Counsel member Adina, second by counsel member Iyer, discussion please of B three. All in favor? Posed? It is approved. B four, ordinance to repeal and replace chapter 113 regulation using a lot of glues of Title IX, police regulations of the code of the city of Ann Arbor. Move by. Counsel member Dish, second by counsel member Hayner, discussion please of B four. Counsel member Hayner.
You know, for the most part, I agree with those callers that decriminalization is the right, the right step forward and keeping people out of the carceral system is better than putting them into system and kind of up for life and getting warrants they don't know about because they can't afford the paid petty fines and so on. But I'm not so sure that it, it's comparable to our effectively decriminalizing entheogenic plants, for example, because I don't see any beneficial use in inhaling dust or dusters, you know, and breaking into abandoned buildings and leaving cans of dust, dust air laying around. And it's, I, I, I believe that our law enforcement here in the community is enlightened enough to, to divert these folks. And, you know, it's not a great solution here, but it's just sort of the rote business of council to go through and, and, and update these rules. And so, you know, I'm going to support these changes and, and we can come back and look at a wholesale thing if we want to. It's not likely that we will. But I, I think it's okay that we're making these changes and I think it's okay that we've expanded the amount of things that are under these as times change and access to, you know, brain bending substances change. We need to change with the times. And so, I, I'm going to support these changes. And, you know, another thing I just wanted to add is that a lot of this comes from the county, right? And so, when we, when we effectively decriminalize the entheogenic plants, it wasn't a couple of days later that the county prosecutor issued their own edict that they were going to follow our lead on that. And, and the same was for sex work. The county prosecutor's also issued a, a statement on their hesitancy in, in continuing to criminalize voluntary sex work, but to continue to look out for trafficking and other issues that were related to that. So, these things are a balance. And I, I think it's right that we're making these changes.
Further discussion. Uh, for my part, I'm going to support these changes and then look forward to the, the further, further rationalization of our code. You know, it's important that, that we make our code easy to understand, both for members of the public and for practitioners. It's important that it reflect best practices and it also, you know, helps us keep track of what we're doing along the way. And if it should come to pass that we, we have more substantive changes downstream, that would be an interesting, important conversation. Counsel member Nelson.
I, I wanted to give an opportunity for Ms. Slay to talk about this a little bit. I also had a question about whether any part of this intersects with state law. We had, we heard some people suggest that we do away with it entirely. I, I would just be curious to hear Ms. Slay's take.
Ms. Slay, you have the call.
Thank you. Thank you. So, just starting off, we want to remember that laws of a jurisdiction don't mark progressive change, but it's how we use the laws in doing that. So, these amendments support two main goals. Number one is the goal of ordinance prosecution, which is to help address the root causes of justice involvement so we don't see that individual again. So, general omissions of a criminal ordinance is not necessarily progressive. It might end up being a little short sighted. If we eliminate an ordinance where there is a companion state law like the glue sniffing or like any of our weapons ones that we have up for tonight, state law continues as the sole law of the land, which means city police and, you know, if we're leading the, by example, for our other jurisdictions, they can still write citations and, under state law. So, it doesn't take us out of the ballgame. That can still happen. These laws will likely remain into effect for a very long time. So, we need to plan for change in administration, change in values, and efforts with our community partners. These proposed amendments embrace inclusion of procedural due process that, and they vest trust within the city attorney's office to continue to lead the charge in justice reforms in our community, addressing the concern we have for arrests. That is very, very unlikely that somebody gets arrested. In fact, I've never seen it for glue sniffing. And I talked to my colleague, Mr. Reiser, in our 35 years of prosecutorial experience, we've never seen someone arrested or put in jail on this charge. As a matter of fact, I've actually never seen someone charged with this. However, it is in our back pocket should we need it, and I'll get to that more in a minute. So, as a matter of fact, unless the officer actually observes someone sniffing the glue, they can't make an arrest because it's a 90-day misdemeanor. It has to be a 93-day misdemeanor to arrest outside of your presence. So, that's not something that we're contending with in like 99% of all of our criminal ordinances. When we talk about decriminalizing mushrooms, we got to use the right terminology. We didn't technically decriminalize it. We made it the lowest priority for the city. It still is against state law. It's still against federal law. We can't get rid of those in regards to paraphernalia and having the things with them. Ann Arbor does not have a paraphernalia prohibition. Unlike most of our communities that we're contiguous with, we don't have that. So, you're not arrested for that. We don't even confiscate it. Also, prison's never an option under the Ann Arbor City Code. In fact, in, under a 90-day offense, you're not even going to be fingerprinted. That's how our code is written. That's why their 90-day offense is not something more. This is on our books to prevent people from harming themselves while engaged in unsafe or illegal activity while under this intoxicating substance. We're not outlawing possession or the use of glues, only that they're not being used in an improper and safe manner. These glues can lead to sudden death or serious impairment of bodily functions. It's different than marijuana. We have this book, law on the books to protect folks. For those who are suffering from medical conditions relating to addiction and they're ready for help, let the city be there to be the one to help via referrals for treatment, deflection, diversion. Our diversion program does work and it isn't like diversion programs that you've seen across the country. This is some new stuff. In addition to that, if you do this work long enough, you're going to get a regular call from a loved one who says, this is happening to my kid. This is happening to my spouse. This is happening to my loved one, and they're not ready to get help. When that happens, we do have this that we can use as a deflection or deterrent to help people get into treatment and get the help that they really need. Sometimes people are not ready to achieve abstinence by themselves, or they don't want to yet, but their addiction is killing them nonetheless. And our second goal of ordinance prosecution, and I, this would be like a challenge going forward to our council, is to create a robust deflection program. Deflection means uncharged, unsighted referrals to treatment. If we don't have a law on the books, we don't have a say in the outcome for what happens to people in our community. We need a collaborative approach with our community partners. I hope that clears things up for you. I do support these recommendations. They are legally sound. They support diversion. They support deflection in the event that we move towards that in the future, and I hope that we do.
Thank you very much. I have counsel member Ramahi and Song.
Thank you, Ms. Slay, for being here tonight to properly put forth the narrative of the intent, purpose, and the practice of these changes. There's a lot of fear in the community around these changes, but many of us, myself included, don't know all the facts. We're not first in criminal law. And we are entrusting others such as yourself in policies that we put forward to guide our way through the ups and downs and pitfalls that may, that may be ahead of us. But I have the trust and the faith in you and what others in the city legal department is doing in order to bring us the criminal justice reforms that we need, that we ask for, that are embodied in the policies that we put forward. So, frankly, just here to say thanks in a very long-winded way in the work that you're, you're bringing and you're doing. And, and please continue to be around to articulate it and educate all of us so we have a better understanding of, of what these changes really do mean. Thank you.
Counsel member Song.
Attorney Slay, can you help speak to any conversations that you've had with social service agencies, folks who work in substance abuse response, CMH, folks at the county sheriff's office? Can you, can you just give us kind of an overview of the, I guess, the late work? I assume you've already done in updating this ordinance and getting that message, I guess, these clarifications out to service providers?
Sure. I'm happy to do that. So, with every ordinance change that's being proposed for you, there's due diligence, not only for myself and others at the city attorney's office to make sure that we're giving you sound legal advice, but we want to make sure that it's practical, that there's an application to it, and that our community of caretakers are also concerned. So, I had the opportunity to talk to substance abuse workers, MSWs from the University of Michigan. These are folks that we've been talking with over the long haul. I'm also a member of all of your treatment teams. So, in my career, I have been part of every treatment court in the county of Washington except a brand-new felony drug court that Judge Punky has started. And this is a very consistent theme and something that we have had to talk about time and time again is if we're forcing people into treatment, is it really the right way to do it? And I can tell you, having just heard a fantastic story of a man who, my goodness, let's see, it's been almost 20 years ago now since he began his journey as an alcoholic. And that's when I first met him. So, let me give you a quick preview. Go back into time. I used to be a tether agent and worked at Community Corrections. And I used to work in the jail getting people into treatment programs. So, I have some experience before I was even a prosecutor of helping people broker into treatment. And when they weren't ready, they just weren't ready. And it was darn near impossible to get that, over that hump. But there are some times when our treatment courts were able to step in. In a lot of very successful cases, we have a lot of successful people right here in our community living in recovery who started out in a treatment program being court ordered. And they showed up, they learned, they were able to get to a point where recovery and abstinence was something that they wanted in their life, and the courts were able to make that happen. I'd love for that to be more widespread. We just don't have the type of funding in all of our specialty courts and our treatment courts. The goal of these courts, diversion in general, is to be 100% restorative, not punitive. We've moved away from that. That's old school thinking. We're not doing that in the city. We're looking for a restorative practice that's supported by our local treatment providers, that is supported by our local social workers, that's supported by our police. And if we could expand our game in the near future to include a deflection where we're not even having to get to the point where we're issuing the citation, we're just simply making the referral, then we'll be the better for it. But if we don't have these laws on the books, we're not in the game on how that proceeds. So, this keeps the city of Ann Arbor in the ability to be that broker and help for services. I hope that's helpful to you, council member.
So, so to be clear, these conversations have already been had with community partners and agencies that we also fund to, to do this work?
Yes. They, and we've talked to people from CMH. I've talked to people from Don Farm. I've talked to other folks who do the substance abuse evaluations for the courts. These are people that we've trusted as a community for decades. And then coupling that with the experiences that I've had in the treatment teams, this is the way we should be going right now.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. All in favor? Posed? It is approved. B five, an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter 115, Weapons and Explosives of Title IX, Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by. Counsel member Ramahi, second by counsel member Adina, discussion please of B five. All in favor? Posed? It is approved. Ms. Slay, come back again.
Yeah, in a few weeks.
All right. Excellent. Well, we're looking forward to it. C one, an ordinance to amend chapter 55, Unified Development Code zoning of .4 acres in TWP Township District R1B, Single Family Dwelling District 559, Riverview Drive. Move by. Counsel member Ramahi, second by counsel member Dish, discussion please of C one. All in favor? Posed? It is approved. C two, an ordinance to amend chapter 14, Purchasing, Contracting, Selling Procedure, Title I of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by. Counselor Iyer, second by counsel member Adina, discussion please of C two. Counselor member Iyer.
Thank you. This is the follow-up to the very successful proposal A that passed with 70-some percent of the vote in November. This was our best value contracting charter amendment that will allow us to be more thoughtful about how we hire contractors for large construction projects in the city and make sure, making sure that we're getting the best value for the money that we're spending and that we are able to consider our own values in the process of, of awarding contracts. I did want to make a motion to make a small amendment, something, I, well, I, I would be remiss if I didn't profusely thank staff first and foremost for their hard work on this. Mr. Fournier, Mr. Dehoney, and others who worked to get this together and, and help execute the vision that, that we came, that we brought forward. The one amendment that I wanted to propose making is under The one amendment that I wanted to propose making is under workforce development. I simply would like to propose that we strike number four. Documentation of how the bidder assesses skills and qualifications of any employees who do not have master or journey person certification or status and are not participants in a registered apprenticeship program.
Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Redina, Ms. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. And the reason for this, and I apologize to Mr. Fournier and others, that this kind of got by me when we, when we were working on it together. But this, you know, I'm afraid that this may undermine what we are really trying to do in terms of prioritizing and giving greater weight to bidders that do participate in a registered apprenticeship program. So this, to me, seems to undercut that, and I think, I think we'll be better off if we, if we just get rid of that, that one portion.
Is that amendment friendly to the body? Discussion of the amendment. Councilor Hayner, do you have a, are you on the amendment?
I'll speak to the amendment. I was going to speak to the whole of it, but, I mean, this, why, I don't understand why I would remove that. We're just asking folks who do not have programs in place to tell us what they do. It just seems like removing an opportunity for otherwise qualified bidders to describe alternatives to registered apprenticeship programs, and I'm sure that they exist out there. I don't see a good reason to get rid of this.
Councilmember Ramlaevan.
Yeah, I'm just unclear in what part of this document that's being altered or proposed to be changed. I did see a written circulated amendments. I'm unclear as to what we're discussing it, to be honest with you at this point.
Councilmember Ayer, what is the site of the? I'm sorry, I cross-talked you. Can you restate that, please?
So it's on page seven. It's number four under workforce development, which begins on page six. And we are simply striking number four.
I think it also depends on which of the two documents you're looking at, the markup.
My apologies.
I believe page 11 on the markup.
Red line is 11, thank you.
11 on the red line, yeah, that's, that's the one I'm looking at. Thank you. I guess I would, I would ask the, the, the feedback from, from Mr. Fournier or Mr. Dehoney as to the changes that are being proposed by a fellow council member.
Mister, if you would like me to answer, Mr. Dehoney, I'm happy to do that.
Go ahead.
From staff's perspective, it's really just a matter of policy direction from council. We can, we can implement an evaluation of, of the, of this scoring rubric, whether it includes this provision or not. So it really is just a, just a matter of whatever council's policy direction is.
Councilmember Redina.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to support this. I, I also want to thank staff for their work on it in my conversations with Councilman Ayer and staff leading up to this. I think one of the things in reviewing that Councilman Ayer is looking to address is really to get rid of some of that ambiguity and some of the questions that we currently have under the current process. If we are truly attempting to prioritize apprenticeship programs around workforce development and workplace safety, I think it's important to make sure that we don't have exceptions that would allow for a bidder to potentially earn those points when they don't actually have the thing that we're trying to prioritize in place. And so I will be supporting this and just wanted to also follow up on something just for clarity that this is kind of step one in implementing that, and then the scoring rubric will come, will come next. And so once we get this in place, the scoring rubric will come back to council as well.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Song, I see you.
The piece that I'm, that's not clear to me is number four seems to acknowledge that it is possible for a workforce to include people who are neither masters, journey persons, or apprentices. Is there a category of worker that is none of those categories? Or is, I mean, I appreciate that we are trying to incentivize those programs, but doesn't it, isn't, isn't, isn't it possible that, that somebody would be working in a context of one of these contracts and not be in one of those categories, not because a company is failing to provide programs or participate in programs like that, but simply because they have employees that are not participating? And I guess to explain further, it seems to me that rather than diminishing the participation or giving a sort of a loophole out of incentivizing these masters and journey person programs, it seems like number four acknowledges there's, there's this other category of employee that we would like you to offer some documentation of how you are measuring their qualifications or skills. So I guess I'm, I'm looking at it differently, not as diminishing the other requirements, but acknowledging that there is perhaps another category of worker. I'm looking for some explanation.
Yes, if the chair is recognizing me, I would, I would answer and say no. When we're talking building trades, we're talking about skilled trades. And those folks are, are rated according to their skill level. Apprentice, journeyman, master.
I've got Ramlaevan. I'm not sure where I, I think I've kept the cue properly. I've got Ramlaevan. Now, Song, raise your hand. Let's go with Song, and then I have Ramlaevan, Ayer, Redina, Hayner. Councilmember Song.
I just have a request for the mayor to mute your, your, your audio while you're typing, because it's hard to hear folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ramlaevan.
I'm still not convinced that this is the direction this council member would like to go. I have concerns about contractor capacity. I have concerns about cost. I have concerns about increased infrastructure needs and a lack of funding. In addition to everything else, I appreciate we'd like to legislate some values and put our dollars where our values are. But I have, you know, I'm a small business owner of over 30 years, and, you know, I like to have one foot at least grounded to the floor at all times. And my colleague made mention that perhaps this is not a loophole to undermine the other advantages that we're trying to, to acquire, but to expand and to give the opportunities, maybe some more people and some more companies as well. And so my question is, what percentage, if possible, do we even know? And I probably would take some time to research it. What percentage of our contracts would be affected by, by such a requirement or, or lack thereof? I just have a concern that we're making things extremely difficult and extremely expensive and reducing competition for smaller outfits, smaller businesses who, you know, I believe deserve a fair shot at things as well. So are we creating such an onerous and burdensome contract and policy where frankly, there'll only be a handful of contractors who qualify? And so that's a concern of mine. It's not necessarily been proven, but it seems like we're making it harder and more expensive to do work here in Ann Arbor. And I, I just, I struggle with that, and I want to know whether, you know, this opportunity here allows for other small businesses to participate in the bidding process.
On the amendment, I've got Councilmember Ayer, Redina, and Hayner.
Yes. Well, the easy answer to Councilmember Ramlaevan is yes, it does. It's important to remember that this rubric does not, this, this is the backbone of a scoring system. So these are not requirements. It does not mean that, that if you don't participate in a registered apprenticeship program, that you cannot get the bid. It simply means that if other bidders do, and, you know, and they, you know, score higher than you on a whole range of things. I mean, it simply means that if, if, if other bidders do participate, that they will score higher on that point. Now, they may not score higher on every single point. So it doesn't mean that you're out of the running if you don't. It is one point in a whole range of factors. And I raised my hand again because I wanted to really emphasize how important it is as a mark of quality to participate in a registered apprenticeship program. What we know as a council and what city staff can be assured of when a, when a contractor does participate is you know exactly what sort of training they've had. You know how many hours of safety training. You know many, how many hours of OSHA training. You know that they've been trained and rated to a certain level of skill. And when we're talking about big construction contracts in the city and, you know, we hear complaints about the quality of our roads and the quality of our infrastructure, this is about raising the quality. And, you know, price will be a factor as well in terms of what's scored. So it's not, you know, that the highest bidder is necessarily going to win. You know, if somebody's got a super high bid, that's, that's not going to score well for them. So you have to be competitive. But I think this is a really important point in terms of the registered apprenticeship program, and I want to make sure that we're stressing it in the right way and not giving people an opportunity to, to kind of get around it with other, with other factors, with other explanations that we have no way of judging.
Councilmember Redina.
Thanks. And Councilmember Ayer commented on much of what I was going to say, but I just want to reemphasize for clarity here what it is that this amendment is touching on, and it is really on the evaluation, the qualitative evaluation of the bid criteria. Eliminating this line would not prevent anyone who does not participate in an apprenticeship program from participating. It is simply making sure that we don't have, if you'll remember previous conversations that we've had at this table, we've, we've had situations where there is something we thought was articulated in our responsible contractor policy, but because of the way that we actually implemented that, it meant that someone who had that policy in place and somebody who provided documentation as to, or an explanation as to why they didn't have that, we're both, we're both considered responsible per our ordinance. They were meeting the requirement. And so this, this is changing that so that in the scoring process, that providing documentation as to why you don't participate in an apprenticeship program does not give you equal points as participating in the apprenticeship program. And so it is not preventing anyone from applying. It does not mean that their bid won't be competitive. It means that they'll have to be competitive in other ways in order, in order to, to meet that criteria. And so again, this is not preventing anyone from, from participating. It is simply setting out the standards for how that scoring rubric will be developed.
Councilmember Hayner. Councilmember Hayner. Councilmember, you are inaudible. Councilmember, you continue to be inaudible.
This, this body has a history of turning their back on folks who have an experience, who have the experience and the knowledge in these areas when it comes to writing these things. I mean, I'm going to call this one like I see it. I think this is, I think this whole Prop. A and this whole legislation here, these changes are designed to weed out non-union bidders. I can tell you from 30 years' experience on job sites that sometimes it makes a difference and sometimes it doesn't. I've had crews, I've worked on sites with crews that are top-notch and they're non-union shops, and I've worked the other way where it's a bunch of slobs, you know, and they're not a union shop. It just doesn't matter so much. There, there are plenty of qualified people. I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to be in an apprenticeship program to be fully trained, fully recognized by the state to have done all the safety training. You do not have to be a union shop to participate in any of those things, to participate in OSHA workshops, the MEOSHA workshops, to be perfectly in good standing with Lara. You do not have to be a union shop. And so this, this really is, we're, we're tilting the, the, the balance heavily in favor of unions, and not surprising coming from this, this council that we're doing that. But that's what this is really all about. And, and to speak, to speak generally to this, I mean, I'm not, I wouldn't go around touting the popularity of Prop. A if we had a, we had an off-cycle special election where 70% of the people voted, 70% of 15% of the eligible population, so less than 10% of the eligible voters are wholly support this. So, you know, I wouldn't say that that's overwhelming call for us to exclude non-union labor from participating in the city bidding process, and that's what's going on here. I'm just calling it like I see it. You, you, you don't need to be a union shop to be experienced, professional, to, to bring up your employees in a program that gives them, them growth opportunities and proper training. You just don't. I'm sorry. I support unions. My father was a millwright. I work on union and non-union sites, but, you know, this is, this, and removing this is designed to, to weed out non-union shops, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Further discussion of the amendment, Councilmember Briggs. Perhaps after this, we can call it a day on this one.
That was actually just my hope. I have questions about other sections.
All right. On the amendment, roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramlaevan?
No.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended. Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I'm not missing this. I assume it's supposed to be included in Section 2, Qualifications, Experience, and Accountability, but is there, is there a place where we might be looking for, you know, we have number three as evidence of any quality assurance program used by the bidder? Is there a place where we might get a list of all the projects that didn't go well? Water main breaks and, and things that were, they participated in. And so I was just curious if that had come up in kind of the discussion of how we, how we rate that, because I'm not sure that they're voluntarily providing information of work they have not done well in the past.
Happy to answer that. There are, so we don't have a general section where we say, please tell us all the projects you've worked on that went totally awry, but we do require that bidders tell us instances where they've received violations from OSHA or where they've received some kind of punitive action from Eagle or the EPA or other similar entities. So those, those instances where they have completed work that would be problematic for us, you know, in such a large way that... you know, in, in such a large way that it might prevent us from entering into contract, they're required to disclose that.
Okay. And if we had, if we were in a situation where a, we had had previous sort of bad experiences with, with a bidder, but they ranked well in others, you know, in other criteria. I'm just curious, how would that play out?
So a couple of things. I think that the language under the qualification section would allow us, it gives some flexibility on the administrative side of city government to, to put together specific questions that we would be able to ask in the bidding process. And that kind of, you know, personal experience from the city's perspective with a bidder is important as we evaluate those things. So it may not be specifically stated in the ordinance, but it does provide the administrator and the staff with the flexibility to kind of probe on those type, type of questions.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Further discussion of the main motion is amended. For my part, I'd like to, you know, echo thanks to staff for working very hard on this and in a very response, in a swift responsive manner in anticipation of the, the passage of proposal A and then after its subsequent passage and further. Would like to thank councilmembers Ira and Redina for having taken lead on this. I believe that the, the passage of proposal A and the subsequent ordinance to bring best value contract into the city is a really important step forward for us as a community. I believe that we will indeed have contracting that better reflects our, our socio-political values. But I think also, and incredibly importantly, it will enable us to obtain the best value. We all exercise best value contracting in the course of our day-to-day lives. And there's no reason why we shouldn't as a city be able to, to consider quality of workmanship and result and the whole variety of other measures, crucial measures, as we decide what to do to affect people's business. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ira?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Rumlawi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I recollect we are at DB1, is that correct? That was C2. We've done C, DC 12345. DB1 Resolution to approve Mill Creek Town Home Site Plan 300 Chelsea Circle Drive, Circle 300 Chelsea Circle. Move by. Councilmember, just second by, Councilmember Rumlawi, discussion, please, of DB1. All favor? Posed. It's approved. DS1 Resolution to approve new Resolution to approve new advanced metering infrastructure, up that fees and amend public services area rules and regulations. Move by. Councilor, just second by, Councilmember Grand, discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Hayner.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say about this is that, you know, I'm sorry for the folks who called in and have concerns about these meters. I have my own concerns about them, a little bit different. But, you know, we had to, I, I think it's, I, I understand where we're coming from. If you don't want the meter, you have this opt-out process. I know it's kind of expensive and, and maybe, maybe burdensome. And it is true that you know, you could take a picture and send it to us. It's, it's just not the way this stuff's going. It's a multi-million dollar project and the automation is, is supposedly going to have benefits for the consumer down the road here. I mean, the only complaint I had about my new meter was the guy put it in crooked and it didn't fit behind the wall anymore. And so I had to shut off the meter myself and make the adjustment to it. And so, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not happy about, I wasn't happy about that, but, you know, it's just part of the process. So I, I, I share the residents' concerns that these meters in their homes could have a, present a problem for folks who are sensitive to electromagnetic energy. And I, I highly recommend that you look at ways to, if you can't afford to opt out, to shield the rest of the household from this so that it can continue to be, you know, read, read from the, from the street. Thank you.
Councilmember Griswold.
We heard from someone who spoke tonight that our charges are higher than other communities. Did we benchmark and is that statement true?
We did benchmark against other communities. And for example, the city of Lansing charges a quarterly equivalent reading fee of $60. Ours is at 58. Battle Creek is at 60. Rochester is at 165. Birmingham is lower at 36. So we're, we're in the ballpark.
Oh, okay. Thanks. That's, that's important and puts it in perspective.
Yep. And our fees were based on actual estimates of actual time it would take. We simulated driving to a simple set of addresses across all billing districts in order to get that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rumlawi.
I believe staff was going to have a response to this as well. And then I may have questions. I don't know if staff has answers to questions that were submitted earlier today. As should have been done at the start of this, but whatever.
I did see questions that you submitted earlier today, or maybe it was late yesterday. Are those the ones you're referring to? So the first question I believe was, could we waive or discount the fee? I think that was one question that you had. And to, to speak to that, you know, that's certainly, you know, something that council could decide to do, but you would have to find a funding source to do it because we can't use water funds to discount or waive a fee because it would mean that all of the other ratepayers are, are paying then for that subsidy. I believe your other question was, would we allow self-reporting? And self-reporting, also there's an equity issue there. If we allow it for one, we would, you know, need to allow it for everybody. Our billing, though, is set up on a quarterly basis. And in order to move anybody off of that or to accept any sort of manual read, we would have to set up, you know, a, a special billing program just for them. And so there would be an administrative burden to that as well. And we'd have to calculate those costs. Did those answer your questions?
Partially. Molly, there, there were many, but I, I guess I'll have to just ask them here instead. I, I did ask about whether it would violate bolt if, if we did waive those fees. I, I also asked whether we could be doing semi-annual readings, not quarterly. I know other utilities estimate and charge you based on prior consumption. The water department used to do that years ago. The, the $58 fee is enormous. It really, that, that's half of what my water bill is. I, I use about 22 units every quarter. I'm above average. I think the average is 18 units. We're, we're talking about fees that equal more than half of one's quarterly water bill. It just, it just, it just seems like a very big burden to place on folks who, who most often are, are elderly and who have medical conditions. The folks that are sensitive to this issue are the ones who are most vulnerable. Not, not, not the well-to-do. And, and believe it or not, there's a lot of vulnerable people still in Ann Arbor. They all haven't been taxed out yet. So the questions I have left was, what were, there, there is an initial charge for this equipment, this meter. When we installed the other self-reporting meters, we didn't charge residents for those meters. Why are we charging these folks for these meters unless they miss something? While the folks that are using meters that self-report were not charged.
This is a capital project, so all of the funds that come from that come directly from the water rates. So those, those were paid from water rates, from user fees already.
Correct. But these other opt-out meters should also perhaps be covered under the water rates. Why are, we're going to make this argument of $58 for folks to have their readers read. I'm still unclear as to why they're paying the initial setup fee, the initial cost for the equipment. We didn't charge all the other users of the water system a direct additional charge.
This requires special equipment that we didn't have calculated into our water rates or our capital project to replace meters. So these would be separate purchases, separate work and activity. There are labor costs, there are drive time costs, equipment costs, staff costs to go out. And so we use the direct calculation just as we do for all of our fees. That's how we came up with that number.
I'm sure there were costs associated with upgrading the old meters too, correct? And I was, I didn't get a question answered back. I apologize if it came in late. But the thought to me was, we paid for all those other meters out of the water fund. There was a cost associated with having contractors come out and do the work and everything else that I understood. But we're not somehow discounting what all, all other customers have paid. We are applying 100% of the total cost of this additional meter, this manual meter. So I, I, I feel that there's a double dipping going on in this case for those folks who are opting out. They never got the benefit of the, the cost that the other residents have received with their self-reporting meters.
Council. Further discussion. Councilmember Griswold.
Yes. To further up, follow up on what Councilmember Rumlawi said. I'm looking for what's the delta? What's the difference between the cost of the regular meters and these new special meters? From a user perspective, from an equity standpoint, it seems like we would just be charging the additional fee, not the total fee. And from a user perspective, we really don't care about what bucket it came in or how we financed it. You know, the, the constituent out there just wants to be charged fairly.
And, and our calculation is based on all of that. And we deducted the, the cost of the meter and put in the $261, I believe, as part of the fee calculation includes the special equipment that we would have to purchase.
Oh, okay. And then did you subtract?
Yes.
The, the cost of one of the electronic meters?
Correct.
From that? Oh, okay. From that calculation?
Yes.
And, and what, do you remember approximately what that was?
I don't. I'm sorry. I don't have that in my head.
That's okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Rumlawi.
Thank you, Councilmember Griswold, for expanding on the, the thought I had about this. And perhaps I get follow-up information as well. But to the Xs and Os, but yeah, the, the delta, the, the difference between the two is what I felt ought to be charged in this case. And it wasn't made clear that that was the case. Perhaps it is, and I apologize for, for assuming that, but it really is, does not come across that way. I guess my questions, again, any way of mitigating, I, I understand the breakdown, the costs that are, that are, that staff has provided us. But when you're, again, talking 50% of one's total water consumption, for me to use 20,000 gallons of water, have it delivered to my house, cleaned, and then also treated, including my stormwater, we're going to be charging people half of that just to come out for a meter reading. I just feel it's enormous. And I just, I, I think there's a better way. And I, I can't support this tonight.
Further discussion? I'm going to be, Councilmember Song.
Is there a correlation between folks who are participating or not participating in this program and those who see property tax exemptions? Meaning like, are we putting an undue burden on constituents for accurately gauging water consumption?
I can't speak to that. I don't know if Mr. Wilhelm.
We would have to look into that answer.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Griswold.
Griswold? Yes.
Councilmember Song? Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ira?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Rumlawi?
No.
Councilmember Hayner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Wilhelm, do we have a closed session today?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have before, it's the Clerk's Report of Communications Petition and Referrals. May the motion please to approve the Clerk's report move by. Councilmember, just second by, Councilmember Redina, discussion of the Clerk's report. All in favor? Posed. The Clerk's report is approved. Do we have communications today from our city attorney?
No, we do not.
Thank you. We now come to public comment, general time. Public comment, general time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council in the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment, general time, one need not have signed up in advance. Speaker should enter the number on your screen. That is 877-853-5247. Once you're connected, please enter 942-1273-2148. Once you're connected further, please enter star nine, star nine, to indicate that you wish to speak. Our clerk will identify you by the last three digits of your telephone number when it is your turn to speak. When it's your turn to speak, you'll have three minutes in which to speak. So please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at public comment?
Michelle Hughes? You have a comment?
Hi. Yeah. Um, I'm just going to say I'm real disappointed in how the glue ordinance discussion went and how the vote went. I had hoped that the city council had saw the value in decriminalizing drugs based on how, based on the city's recent decriminalization of psychedelic drugs and based on the city's legendary historical support of marijuana. I thought that we were a city that saw the value in decriminalizing drugs. And I think that, um, I hope that we are not a city that puts all of our faith in the criminal justice system to give help and support to people because it's, seems pretty clear that that is not the best way to help people. And it's also, makes me disappointed that the city's policies on drug criminalization are so inconsistent that we would be decriminalizing some drugs and then expanding the criminalization of others. It makes me think that it's not based on principled reasoning about what our drug policies should be. But instead, it's just a popularity con- but instead it's just a popularity contest about which drugs are cooler. And so I hope that the city council can take a good hard think about this and come back with another, another ordinance which would effectively decriminalize glue and any other drugs that are currently criminalized under our city's ordinances. And, you know, I understand that there might be state laws against these things as well. And so we, our approach to decriminalization wouldn't necessarily work if it was just remove our laws from the books. But instead we should take the approach that really put Ann Arbor on the map as a famous leader in decriminalization with our marijuana laws by creating a penalty for the, for the drug use, which is a civil penalty, and instructing our police that enforcement of the state law is their lowest priority. And that if they're gonna enforce something about, if they're gonna enforce one of the laws about our drugs, that they should enforce the lesser penalty. And I certainly hope that state law catches up soon and decriminalizes other drugs as well so that we can focus on efforts that will actually help people, providing human services to people instead of spending so much money on cops and jails and things that don't work. So please think about that and please come back with a different solution. Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Donella Waishi?
Good evening, counsel. I wanted to call in on the conversation around before, just like the previous caller. Diversion and deflection still places people within the control of the carceral system, which is a fundamental problem. I just participated in a warrant resolution day in our community where a majority of the participants were black. As we know, because of the excellent work of the crew report, our community over-penalizes black residents. For instance, 66% of outstanding warrants in our community are held by black men, while black men only represent 2% of the population. I also want to note that just because the law that was discussed in B4 hasn't been used doesn't mean it can't be used. I would also like to remind counsel that you have a history of bucking state law. In September of 1972, this body, city council, enacted a marijuana ordinance in spite of state law that existed. And this marijuana ordinance was so progressive that the director of the Michigan State Police threatened to place troopers within the city limits of Ann Arbor to enforce state law. Our community noted that this ordinance was important that we enacted it as a charter amendment overruling the repeal of council so that we would note a just and equitable legal treatment of citizens in this community. Let me read section 16.2 to you to give you a bit of inspiration for how you can address these issues when they face state law. You can instruct that no city police officer shall complain of possession, control, use, the giving away, the sale of a drug to any authority except to the city attorney, and that the city attorney shall not refer said complaint to any authority for prosecution. When we have these laws on the books, we can use these laws in punitive ways which harms individuals in our communities. We've had a history of resisting carceral systems in our community, and I hope that council will reconsider and take up that charge and that responsibility again by creating a care base and a life-affirming approach
30 seconds.
to addiction and use within our community, not one that relies on the carceral system, which is centered in the use of control and punishment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Louis Vasquez, do you have a comment?
Yes, greetings. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi. I was appreciative tonight of the vote towards, you know, better, better work and, and union labor and support of union labor. As a first ward resident, I'm, I was very disappointed in some of what Mr. Hayner had to say tonight. But I, I wanted also to refer to my recent FOIA, number 6867, and also, you know, followed up by FOIA 6878, which was filed by former council member Eaton. In that FOIA, I've documented that Mr. Ramlawi received an email, I'm sorry, yes, and Mr. Ramlawi, along with all of council, received an email from Tom Guarhado on October 1st. On October, it was, it was a complaint. On October 2nd, Mr. Ramlawi sent an email to Vivian Armentraut, which included Mr. Guarhado's complaint. And it said, "Per your request," which means that Mr. Ramlawi must have had some kind of contact between October 1st and 2nd with Vivian Armentraut where he revealed that there was a complaint for her to request. So he sent it to her. This, you know, this is not good stuff. Also, on October 1st, within 90 minutes of getting Mr. Guarhado's complaint, council member Nelson replied, sent an email to Mr. Guarhado us and gave her, gave him her phone number. Now,
30 seconds.
to call. Now, did either of these council members consult Mr. Apostoma, who was CC'd on Guarhado's complaint? Did they talk to the mayor before sending these communications to a local political blogger and, and intervening, trying to intervene in a personnel matter of the city? I find this to be highly irregular, and I think this needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any other callers with their hands up.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public comment?
Caller with the phone number 812?
Hey there. Hey there, this is Kai Pottingen calling from Canada right now. It's been an interesting night as I, as I struggle with how Canada doesn't seem to recognize how children are vaccinated. It's strange. Anyway, it's beyond the scope of Ann Arbor City Council. Anyway, the reason I'm calling, it, it has nothing to do really with politics. It is that from a personal level, I just want to wish every single one of you, regardless of our political differences, regardless of everything, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and a very happy new year. I'm sure next year we'll fight about politics, but just this goes out to every single one of you. I just wish you all personally the very best and a very good, happy new year. That's all. Have a good night. Just Kai.
Thank you. Mr. DeHoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that, you know, after tonight, a lot of the staff will be taking off for the next couple of weeks. But we do have a logistical team assembled. We come back from the holiday, we go immediately into the council meeting, which would be the first in-person meeting under the state's mandate. We plan to debrief a day or two after that meeting. So if we do have some issues to work through, we'll be prepared to do whatever tweaking that we can in order to make it as safe as possible. Part of what we're trying to address is the limitations of the size of room, which then impacts the number of people that can be in the room if you're trying to do social distancing. And so while it might not be perfect on January 3rd, when we see you all, we will try to make it better thereafter. And I just wanted to mention that tonight.
Thank you. Other communications from council? May I motion to adjourn, please? Move by. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Councilmember Song was raising her hand.
Oh, thank you very much. I've got Song and Griswold. Councilmember Griswold?
I wanna thank Moms Demand Action and Survivor Speak for the event they had on Saturday that was Stand with Oxford. It was relatively well-attended, given, given the cold. And one of the messages was, check on your neighbors. And I think that definitely applies to Ann Arbor. The holidays are a difficult and lonely time for some of the people in this community that are not as well off. And I, I hope that we can do that. Secondly, communications. I'd like to repeat my request that we have a social media policy. I think that social media has become weaponized at all levels of government and that something needs to be done at the local level as well. And to do nothing really is to condone what's happening. And I hope that we can get a policy in place so that we can have guidelines for people being appointed to boards and commissions as well as council members. And in ending, I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone.
Councilmember Song.
I'd like to note a meeting that I had with the Students for Sensible Drug Policy last week. I understand a meeting with different council members too. And it was a timely conversation and probably relates to what we had discussed and voted on today in regards to drug usage in the city. I've had follow-up discussions with Attorney Slay. I'd like to do more homework and explore a little bit on how that might connect with our upcoming draft on the unarmed crisis response work that will be out from the city by the end of this month. So I just wanna say, I just wanna note that it's a conversation in, in progress. And I know there are other council members who are interested in this too, especially as relates to policymaking in the state. And I've already committed to having calls with our, our state reps. So I appreciate the concern that we've had calling in. But there's, there's more to be talked about and to work on beyond Model Glue, and I recognize that. Thank you.
Further communication from council? If a motion to adjourn, please move by. Councilmember Adina, second by Councilmember Griswold. Discussion? All in favor? Posed, you are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.